Here.
Councilmember Sumoto.
Here.
Mayor Porter, Mr. Edger.
Here.
Mayor Murphy.
Here. Please join Councilmember Hasselbrink in the pledge of allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
Please join me as we salute our country with the pledge. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Gross will lead us in the prayer.
Please join me in your own way of worshiping. As we assemble tonight to consider the business of our city, Father, we ask that you watch over and guide our councils so that they may make decisions that benefit our entire community. Please also be with our citizens, especially those who are sick or those who are experiencing a crisis in their lives, and help them to recover and find guidance. Watch over the thousands of soldiers who are defending our freedom throughout the world. Protect them, comfort them, and help to make our town and our lives safe. Let these men and women know that the citizens of the United States pray for their safe return and are grateful for the sacrifices that they and their families are making for our nation. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
A special order for the day will now have a presentation by Kerry Worgen, CalPERS Senior Pension Actuary, regarding the annual valuation report and actuarial office update.
Honorable City Councilmembers, I am Kerry Worgen from CalPERS, your Senior Pension Actuary, doing your valuation and all the valuations in Orange County. Each year, we send you a report. I have copies of them. They are available on the website, CalPERS website. You can access them, or anyone in the public can access them, and I'm going to be going through a lot of the information that we have in the report and try and educate as much as we can tonight for your benefit. The session is meant to be informal, so if you have any questions as we proceed, please stop me, and we'll try and make sure everyone understands the concepts that we're talking about. So let's proceed. Before we get into the valuation report and the contents, I'll just back up a little bit and talk about what the Actuarial Office at CalPERS has done over the last year. There have been some significant policy changes. First one is that we are now using the market value of assets with our valuation at 63013. Previously, we were using actuarial value of assets. That was a smooth number to take out some of the volatility in market returns. When GASB, which is the government reporting, required market value of assets, it was deemed that we should also do that for the funding purposes. Another significant change is that experience gains and losses, which used to be amortized over a 30-year rolling period, these are now fixed, much like a 30-year mortgage. We have a fixed period of time, and things will be paid off at the end of that 30-year period. And finally, we are now using a direct rate smoothing approach over five years, what we call the ramp. This is because we're using market value of assets, we do recognize there will be volatility in returns, and we want to make sure that we're not having significant impact on rates. Again, the logic being here that we're going to ramp in either losses or gains over a five-year period, so it's stepped up in a five-year period, level for a 20-year period, and then stepping down or stepping up, depending if it's a gain or a loss, over a five-year period at the end. Pooling change. Again, this is a dramatic one for your plans. As you know, you are in a pooled plan. You share assets and liabilities with about 200 other plans in the pool. PEPRA, which is the Public Employee Pension Reform Act, came into play in January 1 of 2013, effectively closed these pools to new active members. We now have classic members, those that were in PERS before that date, and new PEPRA employees. So people who are hired after that date go into a separate pooling structure. So because the plan is closed to new entrants, there was going to be a problem on the horizon, maybe not initially, but we knew that 10, 15 years down the road, there's going to be very few active members within these plans, and there will be a lot of pensioners and retirees. So because we allocate costs based on payroll, with a declining payroll, the rates for these plans would become astronomical over, you know, the next 15, 20 years. So effectively, we created these two superpools. So they are not closed. Active members go in within the pooling structure, and they'll continue to operate on that basis. One of the fallout of going to this new pooling structure is that pool plans now own their own unfunded liability. So what we were doing in the past is to say, we have assets, say, of $100 million. Our liabilities are, say, $200 million. The plan is 50% funded. We would allocate that 50% unfunded equally amongst all the participants based on payroll. Okay? So when you're no longer basing that unfunded liability on payroll and allocating a fixed rate to everybody based on payroll, we are now allocating the unfunded liability directly to each participant agency. So if your plan is 80% funded, you own 20% of your unfunded liability, and you can pay it off on your own schedule, which means there is a minimum contribution put through into your report, and you can pay more than that if you have additional funds on hand or on reserve, or you can just pay the minimum. One other change is that in the past, your employer contribution was defined as a single rate. That will now change starting July 1, 2015, and your contribution will be based on a normal cost, which is the cost for one year's accrual for your active members, plus a dollar contribution, a fixed dollar amount, for your unfunded liability. For example, if I look at your miscellaneous plan, your projected unfunded liability payment would be $317,000 for 2015-16. And the way that will be charged will be, 1/12 of that will be invoiced monthly, much as a mortgage payment. So you will get an invoice July 1 for that, for 1/12 of that unfunded amount, and you'll have until July 31 to pay it, and then August 1, again, another invoice. So it's just like a monthly amortization payment will be collected going forward. Finally, the last change in ACTO was every three to four years, we do an experience study. And what we're doing is we're analyzing how people retire, what their salary growth has been, mortality experience, longevity, how long people are living, and when they retire. Things like that are all compared to our assumptions. And if needed, we modify our assumptions to better reflect the actual experience. One key area of change this year was mortality improvement. We were seeing that, good news, people are living longer. But for a pension system, that's actually maybe bad news, in that we have to fund more. If you're living 10% longer on average, it means we have to have 10% more money on hand to pay those benefits for that individual. So we are introducing a 20-year projection of mortality improvement, and that will show up in your 63014 valuation that we're working on right now. We did reflect an assumption of that increase into your June 30, 2013 valuation, so you have an idea of what those projected costs will be. Any questions on any of these update factors before I move into your particular results?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, let's go into the meat of the valuation itself. First thing I always like to look at is the funded status. Page eight of your valuation report will show a number of items, the first being the present value of projected benefits. And this is where we do a projection of all future expected benefits to all the members of the plan. They would be your actives, your retirees, could be people that have terminated but have left their money on deposit or transferred to another agency. The second item is the accrued liability. And this is where we take an active member who's maybe worked 15 years and has 15 more years to go. We will just value those 15 years that they've accrued in the plan up to the valuation date. We then compare that accrued liability to the market value of assets. So those are the assets on your account on the valuation date of June 30, 2013. The funded ratio then is just your market value of assets divided by your accrued liability. And when we look at your balance sheet, you can get a better idea of the position of the plan. So again, the key line being the entry age accrued liability. You can see that your plan had about $24 million of obligation at June 30, 2012, and this is the miscellaneous plan we're looking at. That number has grown to about $24.8 million of liability. Your assets increased a little bit faster over that one-year period, from $17.5 million to $19.2, which means that your net, your unfunded liability, has dropped from $6.4 million or so to about $5.6 million. As a ratio, your plan has improved from 73% to 77.3% at June 30, 2013. Now, 1314 has now closed, and we know that PERS has earned about 18% for that year, so it's been a very good year in the markets for us. And your funded ratio would be about 85% at 2014. However, because of the assumption change that we were introducing, that 85 is going to drop to about 81%. So 80 or 81% or so for the miscellaneous plan is where I'm projecting your position at June 30, 2014. Similarly, looking at the safety plan, you can see that this plan has an unfunded of about six point, sorry, went from $6.7 million down to $6.2. The funded position of this plan is 76.7% at June 30, 2013, and that one I'm projecting to be about 81% at 2014, after the 18% return and the change in assumptions. That 81% is probably a little above average for a plan in Orange County. So your safety plan's actually in slightly better shape than most other plans, and your miscellaneous plan is probably right around par for all the other plans I look after in Orange County as a funded ratio. Okay, key component here is future rates and contributions. Again, I point out the valuation date is June 3, 2013, and it will set your rates and contributions for the year beginning July 1, 2015 through 2016. We also provide you with a projected rate for 1617. We use the 18% return, and we also reflect that change in assumptions in our projection. But we don't assume any liability gains or losses, so we don't have impacted any demographic changes, and we assume no additional contributions if the city chooses to pay additional amounts beyond the minimum in our projection. Required contributions are shown on page seven. You have two pieces to your contributions, the normal cost we talked about earlier. Again, that is the cost of one-year accrual for your active members, and we show that as a dollar amount and as a level percentage of pay. And the second piece would be the payment on your amortization. So your unfunded liability is being paid off through these amortization base. We're paying that down to get to 100% funded, and those will be paid off over a 20, 25, 30-year period, depending on the amortization base employed. The schedule of amortization bases are provided on page 12 of your report. We pay down these unfunded liabilities depending on their source. So any assumption or method changes are paid off over a 20-year period. A benefit change or amendment is also paid off over 20 years, and experience gains and losses are being paid off over a 30-year period. One big change that we did this year that we, at one time, will be that change from the actuarial value of assets to market value of assets. That will be paid off over a 30-year period with this five-year ramp. So it's going to step up fairly aggressively over the next five-year period, and you can see that when I show you the projection of the cost in a couple slides. So if we look at the actual contributions, required minimum contributions for the miscellaneous plan, you can see that the pooling structure adversely impacted this plan quite significantly between 1415 and 1516. You'll see that the total employer contribution here was $236,000 for the current fiscal year, and that's projected to go to $538,000. So that's quite significant. And we do have a mechanism that is about to be taken to the board. We call pooling relief. We have identified some plans that were adversely impacted by the new pooling structure, and the miscellaneous plan actually is qualifying for possible pool relief, and we'll show you some of the potential on that in a couple slides. So the total contribution is then, as a dollar amount, is divided by your projected payroll. And you can see that right now, you're paying 11.33% of pay, and that number, although we're not collecting it that way, would be comparative at 26.669. So that's a big jump. Safety plan is not as adversely impacted by the new pooling structure. Current contribution is 655. That number is growing to 755, so more in line with what most plans are seeing as we pay off these unfunded liabilities under the new amortization policies. And the overall rate, because you've now paid off your side fund, is actually dropping from 29.1% down to 28.7%. Okay, so required contributions. You do maintain two plans for miscellaneous and two plans for safety, the new PEPRA plans. So your Tier 1 plan, oh, this doesn't look like it's got the correction. That should be 2.755 for your Tier 1 miscellaneous plan. The normal cost rate is correct, 10.958, and a UAL payment to $317,000. Again, 1/12 of that would be collected on a monthly basis. Your PEPRA plan, it's fully funded. Any PEPRA employees would be charged out at 6.237. On the safety side, your Tier 1 plan, normal cost rate is 18.524, and your UAL payment required would be 268164. Again, 1/12 of that collected monthly. And your PEPRA cost, the 2.757 plan, is 11.153%. Okay, this is a slide where we show you the impact of the ramp. We talked about those amounts climbing fairly aggressively for the next five years, then they level off for about 20 years. You can see that the normal cost, 10.958 for 1516, is going to increase to 11.6 with the new change in assumptions, and that stays fairly level over that, the whole period. The UAL contribution, you can see, is climbing by about $50,000 per year on the miscellaneous side, and by about, looks about $50,000, $60,000 or so for the safety plan each year for the next five years, and then levels off. I've also shown on here the miscellaneous plan, once the pool relief gets approved by the board, and that's going to our board in March. You have the ability to elect the pool relief, which would save you some money in the first few years because the ramp is much lower, but the costs are going to be significantly higher for remaining years. And you can see that with this slide here, that the dark red line shows the pool relief unfunded liability curve, whereas the red line, the lighter red line, is actually where we project your unfunded liability to be over the next, it looks like you're paid off about 24 years into the future. The bars at the bottom indicate the actual contribution, so you can see that the blue bars are what's required currently under the current valuation. If you elected or qualified for that pool relief, you'd see that there'd be much lower contributions the first two years, but then you can see there's a pretty good stretch in there where the green line, green bar is quite a bit higher. Safety plan, again, there's your projected curve. You see it dropped into the 13 and 14 valuation. It's creeping up because of the ramping, that we're not collecting enough in the first few years to pay that down, and then when the ramp gets to the full point is when it starts to dramatically get paid down. And then finally, I wanted to point out one other thing that we have made available through the new pooling structure is the ability to pay more than the minimum contribution. Because in the past, you were all part of a pool, and agency wanted to put more money and pay down their own unfunded sooner, all that money would just be allocated to everybody, whoops, everybody in the pool. So you'd be paying off everybody else's unfunded liability. Well, that's now changed. So any money you put beyond the minimum is paying down your own unfunded liability, and because we are effectively charging 7.5% interest on this quote mortgage, you can save significant interest by making additional payments. And I call these additional discretionary payments, and they provide for full flexibility annually. And again, if you have a good year within the city and there's extra revenue around, you choose to put extra money into the plan, we will then reduce your contributions going forward. Similarly, and I do have an agency, City of Irvine, that is doing just that, they had money on reserve that was earning half a percent interest in some fund, and they've effectively taken some of that money to put into their plan, effectively investing it at 7.5%, and the savings from the lower contributions in the future, they're channeling back into this reserve to pay themselves back. So their plan is to effectively get their reserve back to where it would have been after 10-year period and pay down and be fully funded within a 10- to 12-year period. And that plan, when we did the projections of the numbers, is saving them about $33 million. So there is some significant interest if the city is interested in paying down some of that unfunded liability sooner. And I've done a projection for you for your safety plan. Again, the scenario is totally up to you. This scenario I ran was to say, we put an extra $200,000 in for the next three years. So you can see the line with the ADP, the additional payments, is down much sooner. And with those extra $200,000 payments, you would save yourself, I believe it was over $1 million, just in this scenario, over the course of that next 20, 25 years. So again, this is an option that's available to the city and the agencies as we go forward with the new pooling structure, and one that I can work with your finance people to do some projections for you if you're interested. So saying that, I'm going to open it up to questions on any of these issues that we've touched on, or any other topic maybe you have with the PERS program. And I open it back up to you.
Warren? Yeah, hi. Thank you very much. Can you go back to page, the graphic?
Which one are we looking?
15?
Yep.
So you said the dark red line with the squares in it, that is the...
Pool relief.
The bump up, the big increase, is that, that represents that?
Well, what this, the red line with the boxes is showing you, if you make lesser payments through the pooling relief, you'd save...
Oh, okay, okay.
So you're putting less in the first few years, which saves you, obviously saves the city some money short-term, but because the unfunded liability still has to be off, obviously we have to collect more...
We push it ahead, so it's ahead. So the converse of that, of course, is pay more and then bring our, the slope down further.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. That's it. Troy?
Yeah. Couple things. So if the community's watching this, this is a lot of information. So if you're watching this and you're sitting back going, "That seems unbelievable," realize that the budget subcommittee, Rich and I, looked at the value, and we got a surprise about three months ago with, there's two components of this that we're most concerned about. One is the unfunded liability. Every city, you hear it everywhere, the county, everybody's talking about, "We've got to pay down the unfunded liability." So this last year, our budget, we took $3.1 million of our savings, our reserve, and we put it up against this, and we said, "Hey, you know what? We're going to be unfunded to about 80%. We're short at 70-ish percent. We'll put in some more, and we'll be at 80. It's all about protecting our employees and to try and have a really strong balance sheet." Three months ago, in the Budget Ad Hoc Committee, we got brought in, and we had, you know, I'm going to say it from a council perspective, staff may have known a lot earlier, but Rich and I were sitting in there, and we found out we have a $400,000 payment coming every year from here forward that we did not plan for. And so if you go specifically, can you show the slide that shows the payment per month or per year for the next four or five years?
This one?
Yeah. That started 213. It's 213 plus the value and the safety. So if you add those together, about $400,000. And, you know, we just got done settling our labor agreements for police and miscellaneous employees. We're feeling good. We got five-year deals in place. We've been able to get everything right, and all of a sudden, bam, we get a $400,000 hit. So right away, Rich and I, you know, there's two things when you're sitting up here, as you look at this, you go, "I've got to deal with this, and I can either complain about it and, you know, saber-rattle, but nothing's going to happen because it's past us," or can we have the person come down and talk to us, the actuarial guy, and that's what Kerry is doing tonight, giving us a little bit better of an education and asking ourselves, "Is there any way to advocate to help change this?" Because there's some key things that happened here. The community needs to know about it, because we're going to go through our budget discussions for June coming up. We've now got a plan for a $400,000 hit we didn't plan for, so that's two police officers out there, and we're trying to figure out, okay, how do we do this? When you look at this, and so one of the ways to do this is to send a stronger message back to Kerry's, telling him, "We very much appreciate him coming here, but please tell your board that the pool change, the biggest assumption change was that we moved out of a pool we were in because of PEPRA and some of the other stuff. We had to move to another pool." And when we moved to another pool, we got moved into a house that has a huge liability, but it's a bigger pool, so we all share in it. We may not have caused it by ourselves, but we all have to pay. So we should be, again, it doesn't help to complain, we should be bitter that we're in a pool, but we got moved into that pool, and it's not going to change. The board made this decision before. Now, there's some other levers, the assumptions. If you've heard of what went on in OC, OSERS, just recently, in the county, they had this big dilemma, whether the problem is 20 years or 30 years out. This plan, if I'm right, Kerry, assumes 20 years as a, you know, how far are we going to look out in the future? Well, the less years you go, the higher your payments are in the short term that you have to pay. So in OSERS, they, the board voted to go 30 years. Some politics happened behind the scenes. One of the board members flipped over. They recalled the meeting again and moved the assumptions down because it was either too much or too little. We went all the way down to 20, and, you know, OSERS was debating between 30, 25%, 22. We're at 20. So this is a big assumption change for us. And again, I'm not sitting up here complaining. Very appreciative that Kerry came down. You know, there's two or three things that we could get out of this meeting today. One is educate the community and the council members in detail. The second thing is, can we do anything as council members, as a band of five in a city, and get with the other cities that we partner with, and get involved in the governance process with this board and say, "We do not like these assumptions. We cannot afford them." And Rich and I met a little bit before, just to kind of get a precursor, and right now, this is the high-level weather report. This is what it is. We're, you know, we're looking for ability to influence, and probably the most out of it is Kerry will go back and report to his boss and the board, saying, "Lozal wasn't super happy with what they heard." And it's not that we're not happy, like, we don't want to be a part of the pool. It's, we honestly are in a hardship. We cannot afford a $400,000 hit that we did not plan for a year ago. So I don't know. I struggle. Kerry is just the messenger, and he's been very gracious to give us an idea, but I think, you know, what I'm interested in, and I'm hoping that we can kind of figure out, is the future board meetings from here on out, there's a couple of things that have to be decided by that board, and we should figure out, just like, look, when Edison goes for rate increase, as a council, we watch it, and we either send a letter of support, saying we don't support it, we do, we get involved with across the county, across the state. This is a big deal for us, and so I don't know. Like I said, no solutions. I think, again, I hope the community understands and the rest of the council, because we're going to talk about our budget workshop coming up here, but this is a big amount of money. And there was three options put up here just to kind of cut through all the verbal part, and it was, you know, you can go with that plan. Do you have that slide that we can show, or is that part of this presentation?
Actually, it's funny, because I sent two presentations. This is the first one. There was a second one. There was one other topic that wasn't covered in this presentation that I wanted to get to.
Sure.
And that was the concept of what we call a hardship request. A city has the ability to petition our chief actuary and say, you know, for various reasons, we're struggling to make contributions. And he will evaluate your request. There's a bunch of guidelines you have to put through into your request, but he has the ability to stretch that payoff period over a 30-year and a fairly level period as opposed to this ramping thing. So there is the potential to petition for hardship requests for your miscellaneous plan.
Right.
And obviously, it is a lever that you can use to pay these things off a little bit later and save some money in the short run.
So just, and the last thing I'll say is the capstone of this, to put in perspective within the Lozal budget, is you're going to hear a good story coming up of reserve, that we had a better year in our sales tax than we thought last year, $200,000 to $400,000. So you start feeling good, and then you start saying, "Oh, man, we've got to pay 400." And so the dilemma the council, the extended council needs to deal with is, do we, how do we pick up this for the first couple of years and blend, you know, some of the money out of our savings, some more money out of savings outside of the unfunded liability? Do we use all of our reserve this year to pay this problem for next year? But again, how long can you afford to do that? So, you know, Mayor, I really appreciate the opportunity, and thank you for coming down. I don't think we have solutions, but I... I don't think we have solutions, but I think the presentation very much helped us understand it. Thank you.
One other thing you did talk about, just I'll touch on briefly, is our board is always open to agencies coming down. When they make some of these decisions relating to assumptions, the amortization policy, the discount rate, they all get discussed, and we do have a number of agencies that come down or send letters in, effectively either one way or another, to support or to try and convince the board to change the assumptions the way they see fit.
Can we ask, I guess, Brad, on your side, just a, here's the next board meetings, and just items of interest, if we want to try to get together where we can go, and maybe even get some of the other Orange County cities that participate in this. Like I said, it doesn't help to complain about it. If we can do anything in a very professional way, we should try to do that.
Yeah, and Kerry's been very helpful as our actuary and the actuary in the county, and we've been reaching out to other cities to see what their impact it will be in '15, '16 especially, as you mentioned. So it's high on the radar screen of staff and now of council, and we will stay in touch with Kerry, and we'll work on feeding the information back to the council and to the community, work on whatever we can.
Any other questions, Dean?
No.
Okay. Kerry, I'd like to thank you for, I know you've been here all day with the staff and the ad hoc, and now the council and the city. Thank you for bringing bad news in a gracious way. Would you be available if, when we finally start digesting this and get a semi-understanding? Would you be available to come back and answer some questions?
Sure. I kept down to Orange County on a fairly regular basis. My office requirement is only that we have to have two meetings to justify me being out of the office for the day, so I just need to coordinate with another city, and everyone seems to be interested in talking to their actuaries, same kind of issues that you all face with, you know, how do we make these payments and what options do we have? The ADP is very interesting to a lot of agencies right now, too, so I'm sure we could easily be back again in the future.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for the invite.
Okay, we're at a little bit of an impasse here, because our presentations are scheduled for six o'clock. So if you don't mind, we're going to jump around just a little bit and try and get some of the business out of the way. Maybe moving to number eight, the warrants. We have a motion to approve the warrants.
I'll move to approve.
A second?
A second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gross?
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselberry?
Aye.
Councilmember Kuzamoto?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Edgar?
Aye.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
You know, it's close enough to six o'clock, why don't we open up the oral communications? At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks are to be limited to no more than five minutes per speaker, please.
Honored Mayor and council and staff, residents of the Los Alamos. I'm an advocate for zero tolerance for fatalities. My organization is distracted driving awareness in complete streets. I'm here tonight, I've read your general plan, and I suggest that you delay it a little bit and consider some of the comparable plans in Orange County, and that's Huntington Beach as one. Costa Mesa is forming a committee of bike and walking, and they're also getting ready for the sequel change in 2016 of the SB 743. There is a transportation analysis that you can read, and it'll be emphasizing bike and walking for mitigation of zoning issues. And also, the California Transportation Commission on Two Points will be in Orange County next month. If you want to meet and confer with those hires of B and others in transportation, because we're going to be charged, there's a pilot project, will be charged by the mile, no longer by the gallon in three years, possibly. I don't have the exact crystal ball date, but it's going to happen if our cars are equipped. And that's going to change with the climate change bill that you're in your general plan. It's going to encourage local shopping, walking, as you have on Los Alamos in your document, but there's nothing really emphasizing the NACTO, which is the National Association City Transportation Officials, which is in the AB 1193 that's in your document for Class IV cycle track. It has no mention of natural standards in your document, nor in your document do you have a call to training for the youth, how to walk and ride bikes at the elementary level. Then law enforcement at the end is going to have to deal with infractions of stop signs and such because of lack of training. That's not in the document, like Huntington Beach. There's just a series of things in there that I would encourage you to delay and make sure you have those components, because you're going to see a change in mobility issues in the very near future. I do, I'm doing Hennan High Cities Master Plan with the staff, and I've been doing Huntington Beach, I've been to all the cities. In fact, our next council meeting at Garden Grove is going to look at funding, active transportation funding, and they've hired a grant writer. And I see in your plan, you have for the railroad train, TRP, right away abandoned in your document, and there are funds for that. There's just a series of things I can help you with for free, because I want to see success of your city, but I'm limiting to the five minutes. So I guess I sprinkle some real sweet stuff to you guys, but I'd urge you, before you move into voting for support of this general plan, that you enhance it as much as possible and compare it to other cities in Orange County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. How's everybody doing and staff? Seth Eker, Runfield Beach, the public. Delighted to be here. Guess what? It's run time again. Wait, let me get it on the camera. There it is, yay. So coming up on March 21st, we'll be doing our annual 5K, 10K, and 1K Kids Fun Run. There are special notations here on this poster that I just wanted to highlight for a few, for you all and the public, and that's, we're really looking at our legacy and enduring sponsors. This is a 41-year-old race this year. And for Seal Beach, it's our centennial as well, so we're doing a lot of things around that. Los Alamos has been an absolutely critical part of the success of this race. We've partnered, I think, really well on this race. We certainly support Race on the Base, which is coming up for you guys, and I know that my gym, along with lots of others, have teams already registers for that, which is really exciting, and it does good things for your community. So I just wanted to draw your attention to it. Registration is online. I've left some materials with staff, but if you do want more information about how to register, volunteer, get involved, do anything, the grant application process, because of the date change, because of the centennial, we had a couple of different date changes, and that got a little confusing. So again, March 21st, the grant deadline is April 30th. So for all those booster clubs, particularly the high school, all of the school district, we want to make sure we get all those grant requests in, because if you don't submit a grant request, we cannot consider you. So please make sure you do that, and come out, register, and run. We're about halfway sold, all the way through the kids, there are only 400 slots for children, that's 10 and under, and we're almost halfway sold through adults, so we're just about over 2,600, 2,800. So sign up now. Thank you so much, and thank you for all the work. Yes.
Would you like to give the website?
Yes, it's runsealbeach.com. Final note, just as a citizen, looking at this, Calpers, listening to this presentation, I want to compliment the council for providing this information to the public. I think this is really good information, and I hope our town will be doing something similar and having Calpers come down and talk about this, because this is very important stuff for all of our financial health. So thank you for that as well.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm John Underwood from the Los Alamos Cable Commission. I just want to talk a little bit about something that was brought up at the last meeting. There was an assertion made that the LATV Commission had actually done, over the last couple of years, very little, that in fact, perhaps our preeminent success was acquiring some t-shirts. And it, as the chairman of the Los Alamos Cable Television Commission, I think I would be remiss if I didn't take that statement seriously and look into it and review it. And I have done that and made some casual observations about what the commission has actually done in the last couple of years, because it is a fair question. Certainly, we have purchased t-shirts for LATV. I don't denigrate that small thing, because it is important that LATV be identified in the community. Important because we are, that moniker puts us out there and puts us out in the community and says to the community, "Come and be, and partner with us." So it's important that the community be able to identify who we are out there. Also, there's an element of security that was, of course, tantamount to me. I want whoever's working with me out in the field or even in the studio to be identified, because we should only be having people who are identified as LATV volunteers, technical people handling our equipment. And those shirts help us do that, identify who those people are. So not a small thing, but not the only thing that we've done in the last couple of years at LATV. And let me just tick off a couple of things that we have done. For example, the commission has discussed and subsequently created a much-needed maintenance and discrepancy log for LATV, something we haven't had for years, and every television and radio station does have. And the current chief engineer for LATV is using that on a regular basis, on a weekly basis, and we provide schedules to him to be able to log our problems, discrepancies, so that we can fix things. Very important item. Commission has authorized and reestablished a traditional on-air community calendar, which we had not had for a number of years. And now, public organizations in the community are taking advantage of that. That's something we stood up just in the last year and a half. And by the way, those notifications are free to the public, and we on the LATV staff matriculate them and get them on the air at no additional charge. So that's a very important item that we have accomplished in the last year or so at LATV. The commission has discussed and reviewed a document supporting a producers pool, and has reviewed the numbers of people that are now on that list of producers who want in the studio to produce programs, producers from the community who are hoping that we can get the studio back up and running. The LATV Commission conducted a very important, took action on a 4-0 vote to approve a recommendation that was brought to the council, a 4-0 recommendation, that the council consider a major upgrade package for the studio at LATV to be able to accommodate those producers that are coming in and wanting to utilize a studio for public access programming. The commission also, at the same time, issued a 4-0 vote to initiate a study and potentially to fund streaming services, a streaming services capability at LATV, a very important aspect of what we do. There was a thorough commission evaluation of equipment, and resulting in an updated inventory list that the commission approved, and in addition, a discard list of surplus items and broken equipment that we ended up donating to the USC Film School last year. LATV Commission initiated discussions over the Community Access Preservation Act, which is a national movement, now a congressional legislation item that is being considered and would greatly enhance the funding at LATV if it passes. We asked the council to pass a resolution to support the CAP Act, and the council, you folks, subsequently did. The commission formed a subcommittee to study the recreation department's facilities for the possibility of using rec department facilities for some of our studio or auxiliary productions. We formed a subcommittee and went over there and looked at it, and found it to be infeasible, but we went through the study, and we brought that back to our commission. We've done, we've bought material, items for playback, for server operations, for studio operations, and playback server operations. And most recently, we initiated discussions regarding the LATV part-time consultant manager that you are now going to be considering in the weeks to come. And we're actually able to change the RFP process, which was, we thought overly vague, into an RFQ process, that is, a request for qualifications, which the council and staff subsequently bought into. So that's just a few, and I know my time is up, and I'll defer, but these are just a few of the things that the LATV Commission has done, and we are currently have on our table other agendized items for an alternative management of the studio that would support and ease the tax burden on a general manager, should we acquire one. We're also working on a workshop program for LATV and resurrecting that. So there is a great deal that LATV Commission has done and is in the process of doing on behalf of the city and on behalf of our public access community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll try to be briefer. J.M. Iveler. Good evening, council. Pleasure seeing you. Happy New Year. It's my first time before you in the year. Last meeting, a dragon reared its head again. We just spent a lot of money, city tax dollars, on the general plan, and it's in its final phases, and most people are pretty darn happy with it. And in the general plan, there's nothing that has a picture of Los Alamos as downtown, possibly because every time somebody gets this fantasy in their head that we should have one, they try to put it between a lumberyard and a hospital with the major thoroughfare having nonprofits along it. And it's time to bury this. It should have been in the general plan. We should stop spending tax dollars on it. It's not in the general plan, it doesn't have a picture of a downtown, it doesn't talk about what we need to build the downtown, which is, we need retail commerce, we need a whole bunch of things that don't actually exist between a lumberyard and a hospital and doctors' offices and nonprofits and homes. It's really time to let this idea just die for a while. And maybe in a few years, when somebody actually comes up and describes what a downtown should be, what it should look like, what it should be in terms of commerce and industry and homes and everything else, then we can start looking around the city and see if we have an area in our city that would accommodate such a thing. But it's time to stop pointing to one little area of the city and saying, "There's our downtown," because it isn't a downtown. And it's time to stop wasting tax dollars on trying to create one when there's nothing there to create. Would it be nice if we had a nice walking downtown? Yeah. I'd like to see one in Westminster, because Westminster has a downtown, sort of, maybe on Bolsa, but they've got another downtown, sort of, on Beach, and Garden Grove sort of has a downtown over here and a downtown over there and a downtown. There are places with actual downtowns, like Seal Beach. Main Street is downtown. It's also a destination of itself. They built their downtown around their destination. Second Street built a downtown around a destination. Downtown Long Beach is a destination in which they built a community of commerce around it. We've got to stop trying to say, "Let's call this place downtown and then figure out what we're going to do with it by spending tax dollars." It's time to end that. It's time to say, "We have a general plan, let's work on the general plan." And if there are issues with the general plan, potentially, let's define what we're going to do. Mr. Edgar, or, excuse me. Mr. Edgar and Mr. Kuzamoto. When Mr. Gross said, "We're going to sell this building and we're going to get a new one. We're going to move our city hall," you both said, "Hold on a second, before we do, let's figure out what we need." Before we do that, let's take the cart and get it behind the horse. Let's figure out what our needs are. Let's figure out all the little things. Downtown is the same thing, folks. It's throwing the cart out there and saying, "The horses will catch up sooner or later." It's time we do it the way Mr. Edgar and Mr. Kuzamoto suggested we look at city hall. Let's figure out what our true needs are as a city. Let's figure out what we want to achieve. And then let's look at our city and see where we could potentially do it. Let's stop putting the cart out there, "We're doing it here," and not knowing what we're doing. Thank you very much for your time this evening, and have an outstanding evening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
I'm Stephen Hammond of Greenbrook, a cable TV Commissioner. Televising the city sanctioned events, such as State of the City, Police Appreciation, Fourth of July, Winter One Land, and Race on the Base, are all imperiled because of insurance requirements on potential producers which have not been employed, have not been imposed until recently. Please resolve this. Item 10B of today's agenda considers LATV televising of the planning commission meetings as a pilot program. I submit that the cable commission meetings might make a better pilot program due to potentially decreased cost for shorter meetings and simpler pre-meeting setup. Contemporary issues before the Commission are technically complex, and current minutes preparation has resulted in confusion about the content of discussions. In particular, the city manager has stated to the Commission what I view as a faulty interpretation of Council expectation of Commission duties. In the September 11th Commission written minutes, city manager stated that the final draft of the RFP will incorporate suggestions and ideas provided by the cable commission and the City Council ad hoc commission. There's been no evidence of any incorporation of suggestions, because we have not discussed it. In the November 13th Council minutes, the agenda item stated that the city manager will report back to the Commission once the RFQ has been distributed. At the February 2nd Commission meeting, I objected to insufficient involvement of the Commission in the LATV manager RFQ process. We saw no questionnaires or bitter responses. The city manager said Mr. Underwood's alternative management plan was in some way incorporated into the RFQs, and submission to the Council of that plan was voted down by the Commission on that assertion. I was reprimanded for not objecting at the proper time. The city manager has not agendized RFQ responses to the Commission for any kind of evaluation. I can only imagine the frustration of potential community TV producers to this continuing delay in providing opportunity to use an equipped studio with competent personnel to make public access programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close. Let's take 10 minutes so we can set up for the presentations and get started back at 6:10, please.
I think I remember being there. That is good to get involved.
Okay, we're going to call the meeting back to order, please, and we'll go to the presentations. The Council will join me up front. I'd like to introduce Silas Myers from Mothers Against Drunk Driving, here to make the presentation, explain a little of what they do. Silas, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. I'd like to thank everyone for allowing Matt to come to this event today and recognize an officer for her efforts in saving lives on the streets throughout Los Alamos. First off, I'm here to honor one officer who has gone above and beyond within the city. As many of you know, as residents, this is a small city comparatively speaking. I was just told that there's about 12,000 residents. And in my previous job with Matt up in Sacramento, one of the jobs that I did was, I acted as the law enforcement liaison. We would take a serious look at small cities and what their arrest numbers were, and I can tell you that the number of arrests that this officer made is truly outstanding for the size of the city. So, given that, I'd like to present on behalf of Matt, Orange County, the DEUCE Award for any officers making over 25 arrests. There is one officer this year who is also the top arresting officer in the city. Her name is Detective now Samantha Mathias. Samantha, please come forward. On behalf of Matt, I'd like to thank you for your life-saving efforts. We truly believe that every single DUI you take off the road is a potential life saved. So, thank you very much, Detective.
Say a few words at the end, please. Okay. And also, the City of Los Alamos would like to present a certificate of recognition to Detective Mathias for exemplary work in driving under the influence of apprehension. I'd like to ask the Chief to say a few words this time.
My pleasure. You know, I'll just tell you a little bit about Detective Mathias. She's been with us for five years, and she's received recognition for being the, for arresting the most drunk drivers amongst all the officers in our department three of those five years. And what's truly remarkable is this DEUCE Award that she's receiving, it's for the calendar year 2014. And for half of that year, she's been in the Detective Bureau, which means that she was awfully busy those first six months where she was in patrol. So, she really, really does make an impact in DUI enforcement and all other kinds of enforcement in our city, and she just does a great job.
Thank you, Chief. Detective, would you like to say a few words?
I just want to thank you for this award. I appreciate it, and I think the goal in this city is to keep everybody safe, and we care very much about each and every one of the citizens in this city. And this is just, I appreciate the honor, but I'm just doing my job, and I'm just glad to know that we're keeping people that should not be driving under the influence off the streets and keeping the citizens of our city safer. So, thank you.
Thank you for all your good work. Thank you. Yes. Thank you both. Okay. We also have a presentation to one of the stalwarts of our community, Nessie Stewart, who has completed Goldman Sachs $10,000 Small Business Program. Nessie, congratulations. Carl, I'm sorry to leave you out. Nessie is going to, Nessie, I'm sorry, is going to explain a little bit about the program that she went through. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to the City of Los Alamos for acknowledging me for my accomplishments. Goldman Sachs has a $10,000 Small Business Program, and they have a goal to help 10,000 small businesses across the country grow and create jobs. This program is sponsored through community colleges and universities across the country, and they're currently in 12 states. Long Beach and New York were the two campuses that initiated the program in 2010, and I had the privilege of being invited to participate. It was a, we had 11 class sessions over a four-month period, and in the process, we created a five-year growth plan. It was quite intensive trying to get through the program and run my business at the same time, but I accomplished it, and I feel so privileged to have gone through the program, and now we're working on implementing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can tell that you're humble and don't do this much, because you didn't mention your business when you have a chance for a free plug.
Oh.
Please.
Yes. We're, Carl and I are owners of Printmasters in Los Alamos. We're located next to Green Street Interiors, just north of Ganawal Lumber. We've been there for seven years, and we could not have accomplished what we've accomplished in the last seven years without the support of the residents and businesses in Los Alamos.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That concludes our presentations. We're going to go on to the consent calendar. 9B is going to be pulled since we have to have a discussion anyway, so we'll pull that right away. Anyone else care to pull any item?
I'd like to pull item C. Item E.
C and E. Anyone else?
I'd just like to pull F.
Okay. So, why don't we start with C? Oh, hang on a second. Someone move the rest, please?
Yeah, I'll move the balance.
Thank you. All second?
All second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Staff report on C. Dean, you want a staff report?
Not really.
Okay.
Just from the standpoint of the community, we're in, I think, the second phase, and the city manager can correct me if I'm wrong, we're in the second phase of replacing street signs throughout the city. And this phase encompasses about $15,000, and, let me see, the communities that are Actually, this is the rest of the city. The original area was from suburbia, apartment row, College Park North and Old Dutch, so those were done in our first phase last year. I asked the question of staff, and what happens to the signs when we're done? The other signs that are coming down, the new signs are meeting new standards as far as reflectiveness and readability and lettering and so on, and was told they go into a pile, and we really don't have a program on it. I can recall people wanting to get a street sign. Maybe it was their name, maybe it was a child's name, maybe they just wanted to have a copy of the sign that they had. And we don't have a program that exists. And I talked to staff about it, and that's the answer that I got. I'd like to see and ask if staff can't develop some type of a program where those people that have an interest in getting one of the signs that have come down or are coming down to be able to come in and purchase them. We're not going to be making a ton of money off of doing something like that, but short of recycling them rather than just sticking them in a pile, I'd like to see the citizens have an opportunity, if they want, to get a piece of their neighborhood history-wise to put in their backyard or on their driveway or wherever else they may want to use a street sign. So, that's the reason I pulled this item, and if the Council concurs, we can ask staff to look in and see if there is in some way that our residents can actually purchase a sign if they would like to.
Okay, any disagreements? No? Okay. We'll go on to item E.
I pulled item E as well, and why don't we go ahead?
Want to order me?
Excuse me.
We need to approve C, okay?
Okay. I'll move approval then.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, C passes. Onto E.
I moved, pulled item E, which is a discussion regarding a police department succession plan, so that the community knows what we're talking about. I'd like a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'll just, I'll introduce the item and then have Chief Mattern go into more detail on what is in your report tonight. This is a police department succession plan. This is something that has been discussed with the City Council in terms of bringing back a plan for addressing the future of the department. And with the potential of three major retirements in this upcoming year at the management level within the police department, staff has put together this succession plan, which we think will address that now for the short term and provide a platform for the succession up to chief and within the ranks and within the departments for many years to come. So, I want to have Todd, Chief Mattern, go through the details of what is in your report, and then we will take any questions that the Council may have.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. The police department command staff consists of myself, Captain Bruce McAlpine, Cassandra Palmer, our Support Services Manager, and together, we represent nearly 40 years of combined experience at the management level in the city. With all three of us becoming eligible for retirement this year, and recognizing that this amounts to a great deal of institutional knowledge that could depart in a relatively short period of time, as well of the potential impact as it relates to cultural stability, the succession of leadership in the police department has been a topic of concern and discussion for some time. The positive side of this, though, is that the police department is well-positioned with experienced, talented, and educated staff at all levels of the organization, but especially at the rank of sergeant, which would be next in line to promote to the management level. Following internal discussions, as well as some with the Budget Subcommittee, staff feels that this is an ideal time to take advantage of the leadership potential in the organization and revert back to the traditional two-captain command structure that existed in the police department before the Support Services Manager position was created. With two captains, we would create a second promotional path to the rank of chief, and by promoting internally, we lessen the impact of the impending retirements. Staff development is also enhanced by the two-captain structure, which will better prepare the department for future changes. Our police department has a unique culture in which our personnel love this department and are deeply committed to the community. The preservation of that culture is essential to maintaining those police-community relationships. Our officers may not be the highest paid, but in my opinion, their professionalism and dedication is unsurpassed in this county. The recommendations in this report also contain a couple of housekeeping issues that relate to the tiered salary structure and the consistency in retiree medical benefits that I would be happy to elaborate about those if needed. That includes my staff report.
All right. I asked the city manager if we could discuss this as a personnel matter in closed session, and the city attorney weighed in and said no. And I offered another suggestion, and the city attorney weighed in and said no. So, what I want to talk about is more on a policy basis with my colleagues and has no reflection on the police department and the personnel that we have. The police department did a planning session last year where the command staff, sergeants and above, as I understand, went up and went out of the city and met for three or four days to talk about various plans. The discussion of changing the existing staff was not brought up even during, to the best of my knowledge, even during our negotiations with the labor unions. We have a request before us to take a civilian position that was created in 1998 as a cost-saving measure then, and create a civilian position over the administrative division. That has been effective and worked quite well for the city since 1998. We're now faced with a situation where that individual can and is going to retire. It appears to me... It appears to me that the approach that's being taken is to enhance the number of management-level personnel for promotion purposes to chief because the chief is ultimately going to retire, as is the other captain. I don't see anything in the staff report that talks about comparable staffing levels with departments similar in state hours. I think each member of the council has had discussion at one point or another with council members from the city of La Palma. And the city of La Palma has proposed a potential as part of a recruitment situation. They have twenty-five officers, we have twenty-five sworn officers. And they've proposed that we look at the idea of taking their chief and having their chief work part-time for the city in a, in a shared cost situation. That seems somewhat novel. It seems somewhat worth considering from the standpoint of, of cost and expense. I believe the members of the ad hoc committee and particularly Mayor Murphy has made comments since he's been on council about our increasing cost for public service in the community and the additional costs. This proposal asks for seventy-five thousand dollars more above what we're currently paying for salary and benefits and another vehicle, which is not included, I don't believe, in that seventy-five thousand dollars. And it creates another public service retirement person that we've already heard just a little bit ago is one of our issues that we're gonna be dealing with. And I find it very hard as a steward for the community and the money that we're spending to come up with additional money so that they can promote from within. I have no problem on an idea of promoting from within. I do have concerns that this approach may be the wrong way and hasn't been vetted sufficiently from a policy standpoint within the members of the council. We were very fortunate to be able to promote Chief Mattern from within. Chief Mattern started his career here and hoped to end his career here, and it appears like that's going to be the case. We don't have lieutenants. We have sergeants and we've added corporals during the, the negotiations, I believe. We added some corporal positions. The report makes reference that we had a sergeant position, an unfunded sergeant position as administrative sergeant in 2008 because of a struggling economy. Have we replaced that position already?
You mean, have we gained it back?
Yes.
No.
So we do not have an administrative sergeant?
Correct.
Okay. I, I think that we need to look at other options in terms of, of cost containment in the process of what we're doing because making a step to create a public safety position is gonna be a very costly one to us simply for the purpose of being able to give a promotional opportunity from within the department. I'm not sure that, that, and I appreciate the amount of, of years that we've got sergeants that have been involved. The captain is gonna retire, so there's gonna be a replacement potential there. Are we, are we talking that because we've got two captains, we've got the ability to move one or two of them when in reality neither one of them are gonna be in the captain rank that long by the time we're ready to replace the chief position? So it just seems like this strategy hasn't been looked at as thoroughly as it needs to be. And frankly, from my perspective, because of the cost, because of the direction that we're going, I have a tough time supporting it. And again, it has nothing to do with the fine work that the police department's doing, nothing to do with the personnel that's in the department or those that are retiring. We created in 1998 a novel model by putting a civilian in that position and it's worked very effectively. And we're not paying public safety benefits, we're not paying for an additional car, we're not doing a lot of things. And to change that at this particular point, simply to create a promotional-type position bothers me. And, and I just don't feel that we've gotten through the staff report or with our members here on the council enough of an opportunity to think about this policy-wise, particularly where we've got a neighboring city that seems to be willing, although I don't know that that's true, I would rather have discussed this more in closed session, but a neighboring city that is willing to share a halftime chief and see how that works. One of the things that our community doesn't know, and, and I think it's time that the community does know, with the advent of the Joint Powers Authority for Communications called Westcom, the cities of Seal Beach, Los Alamos, and Cypress are now interlinked. Two years ago, most citizens don't know this, two years ago, we became one police department in many respects. The, when Westcom was first developed, city of Cypress was on their own frequency and Seal Beach and Los Alamos were on their own frequency. Those frequencies were combined. And now the Westcom operation, which is actually headquartered in Seal Beach, all three cities participate in it, eliminated borders, eliminated city boundaries. And they can see on their screens and their maps through GPS where the cars are. And the closest car to the incident responds. So as a resident, I have a problem and I need a police officer and I dial 911 and a police officer shows up at my house. That police officer could be in a Seal Beach uniform, could be in a Cypress uniform, could be in a Los Alamos uniform, could be the same thing in Cypress or Seal Beach. Our officers were involved with the Salon Meritage Incident, shooting incident that happened in Seal Beach. In fact, one of our sergeants at that time was the gentleman that took that suspect into custody and was involved in the arrest of the suspect. Just two nights ago, the city of, of Cypress had a robbery occur or burglary occur at a Radio Shack at 4:47 in the morning approximately. We had a shift change starting to occur. We normally have two cars on at night plus a, a shift supervisor. We wound up with four units responding over to that call and backing up in perimeter and the, the apprehension of at least one suspect in that particular method. When any city has, any of our three cities have a problem, we get support of all three cities if it's needed. And it depends on, again, workflow and time flow, but we get those folks responding. So in reality, we have one police department. We have three chiefs. We have multiple captains. We have multiple other administrative persons that are in that position. And as we continue to go down this path, and I think Mayor Murphy mentioned the continual increase in law enforcement costs to us, as elected officials, we need to be thinking how we can more efficiently and effectively provide that service. And one of the areas that is duplicated is gonna be in the administrative level. And if we continue to add positions, it just means we have to wait for attrition or some other particular method in order to reduce some of that overhead. We may be at that point at this stage. This was brought up, I believe, by Councilman Edgar back when Seal Beach had an interim chief and at the same time the city of Cypress had an interim chief. And when it was discussed, it got out into the public and the general response is, uh-uh, you're not taking my police department. You're not taking away what we get in Los Alamos because we get responses on Part One type calls in two minutes, thereabout, give a few seconds in the process. May not be the same in other cities. Well, in reality, we probably still have that same kind of response time, but we have access to two other departments. So I would encourage the council to not support this at this time. Get further information from the standpoint of staff. We've added corporals. I don't know, I was gonna pull the organizational chart and see and really look at the costs that are involved. I'm just having a tough time with another eighty thousand dollars and a public safety employee. So I'll stop at that point and let you guys weigh in.
Thank you. Shelley, you'd like to?
Sure. I, I definitely have a different viewpoint on this. I, I don't think, in, in talking about the La Palma model, I think right now we have an immediate thing we need to address that's gonna happen within the next six months to a year. I don't see right now how we can even say that we would entertain a part-time chief. Chief Mattern is not part-time in any aspects. I think part of, of a lot of the reasons people move to Los Alm has one for the good schools, which we have no control of, and the other is for the safety, which we have complete control over. And that's just not something I'm willing to cut costs on. We've got a great police department, they've done their due diligence, they've all become educated, which we celebrated last month with their college degrees, and to be able to promote from within, to go back to more of a traditional model in management, which most cities our size have with the two middle management, I think is important, and to give all of our officers a path to a future, because otherwise they're gonna go someplace else. And I, that's not a risk I'm willing to take. From what I understand, the seventy-five thousand dollars does include the car expense?
It does include a equipment replacement charge for the car. So it's, it's, the difference between the non-s sworn position and the sworn position, salary and benefits, and a charge back for the car.
Okay. With, with what Councilman Gross was talking about, the, the La Palma possibility, I just think there, there's a whole lot of vetting out that has to go with that and what it's gonna look like physically, emotionally, what are our residents gonna see, what kind of transparency is that, where's the time gonna be spent? There's just a lot that has to be kind of gone through and decided before we can even make any decisions on that. In the meantime, we have three of our top officers on the retirement path very quickly. So with that, I, I mean, I just think this is taxpayer dollars well-spent. I, I'm always looking to cut costs. This is not a place I'm willing to even entertain that. You know, that, the model with, with the Support Services Manager has been very successful. I think it's because, or I believe it's because of the person that's in that position. And I, I don't know if you could find another civilian that could even come close to filling those shoes. So I, I'm willing to throw that net out there to get a sworn officer in here that, that has that potential to be able to do that with the future of being promoted. So with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I wanna thank Councilmember Gross for bringing this up and pulling it. It certainly was thought-provoking and hearing both sides of it. I guess my question would be to the timeliness, is, is this like an urgent thing or is there actually some time to kinda think about this and?
The, the timeliness is important as Councilmember Hasselbrink brings up, and we have a key position in the city that's retiring and potentially and likely. And this would give us an opportunity not only to promote from within the ranks where we have very solid personnel at the sergeant level, also would give us an opportunity if we had to down the line recruit from outside for that position, a stronger recruitment position that we'd be in. Because the model that's out there primarily is, there are two at the administrative level underneath the chief, and that's the primary model throughout Orange County. We would be mirroring that. The administrative sergeant that was mentioned is also a model that's out there, so there, if we had to, I mean, we, we have a, we're in a very good position to be able to promote from within, which when, from a succession planning standpoint is outstanding because of the outstanding personnel that we currently have. If for some reason we can't promote from within all of the existing positions, we are in a strong position to recruit from outside the organization too.
Okay. But when I'm asking, another month is?
Timing-wise, with, with the one key position leaving and we have an upcoming captain's test planned, and with that captain's test, we would, we would hope to be able to point to someone as the leading candidate for the captain and then shadow the, the Support Services Manager that is likely retiring. So it's a very important piece, timing-wise, to do this as soon as we can, to get as many months out of the shadowing as we can.
Thank you. Appreciate the input. No other questions?
Yeah, a couple things. So, you know, a, a little bit of the history and a little bit of the background of this, you know, from my perspective, this is the final piece of the puzzle that we really do need to think about putting together. And, you know, I, I understand, you know, Councilmember Gross from 2006 on has been very instrumental in going through and consolidating with the rest of the council, but he's always been a proponent of consolidating department heads. If you looked at Community Service and Public Works, we've consolidated that. You look at Admin Services and Finance, we consolidated that. We've outsourced, you know, gardening, we've done all of those things that, that Dean has been very instrumental and focused on. And I think, if you look at this, 2007, a really important thing happened in our community as it pertains to police. And I do agree with Shelley is that, you know, there's the police and the school districts, if you're at any event, you know, that's what everybody talks about, why'd you move here? And police specifically was response times and the feeling that the police is actually our police. And, but in 2007, we, we had six, seven, we had a couple things that went on that was really important to the history of the city. We had a chief issue and we needed to get a replacement for Chief McCreary and Todd, we threw a process and Todd ended up, Chief Mattern ended up becoming our chief. Todd represented, and, and again, this is probably just, I'll just say it's my opinion, I, I'm telling the history from my perspective, but there was kinda two cultures in the police department at that time. And when Todd got selected, we had an exodus of police people throughout all levels. And a different, the different culture took off to more aggressive cities where they would probably fit better in that type of style and format. And Todd came in and his perspective was, he was a community guy, been in this for sort of twenty-plus years. I'm even gonna say the number of years because I always get it wrong and afterwards you correct me. But, but the reality is, at that point, you know, Todd came in as a community police officer chief and he got involved in the community to some, you know, everybody knows him in that type of relationship. And from the top down, we've built out a police department that has become educated. Every single police officer has become an educated, you know, degreed police officer at all levels. We've been trying to look and find out how can we promote from within. And then at the lowest levels, at the, at the boots on the ground, we aggressively are involved not only in going through the academies and being involved in the process to help, but even down to our chief, being involved out in training and teaching these classes. So we actually get a bird's eye view of the recruits coming through the pipeline. And when I say this is the final piece of the, the puzzle, is now we're getting ready, you fast forward after a culture change in the police department, after a different type of a leader, after the investment that we made in increasing the tuition reimbursement benefits that we give to the police officer so we have an, an educated force, now we gotta think about long-term succession planning. And today, just to keep it simple, there's the chief and there's one person under him. And tomorrow, well, there's two. There's one person under him sworn and there's Cassie who's done an unbelievable job as our civilian liaison. Think about this, you, you know, here you are at that level and you're in charge of a lot of stuff and she's been able to pull this off again since 1998, a, a very important move there. But, you know, she, you know, when you're in the, the public safety arena, you've got the sworn officers and the civilians and, I mean, it's like in the Navy, the line and the staff officer, the staff is the doctor, the logistic person, they're not ever gonna take the helm of the ship. And on the police side, to the civilian side, she's never gonna go out and start arresting people. But she's been, she was able to establish herself, create an unbelievable indispensable function throughout the city more towards public safety. And, and I think the challenge that I have when I look through this is that I do think it'd be very tough to find another civilian that we've been able to grow through this model for so many years. I also think it's really important that we make some decisions and have that person work- work alongside of Cassie as we're starting to go. And that probably the biggest part of it is, at the end of this, we will have two captains that are potential candidates for chief, whenever Todd decides to leave, that preserves the culture and the seven-year plan that we've been on as a city to grow this police department into, I won't say grow it, just reinforce it and really, you know, confirm to the community, this is what they want. You know, we've had chances in that back room to talk about moving the police to the sheriff. Dean mentioned, I thought it would be a great idea when all the other cities were kind of on the verge of looking for a new chief, why don't we consolidate? And that did not go that good for me. A lot of people were not ready for that idea of consolidating police departments. When I look at this from a cost of $75,000, I definitely do think that that is something that's hard. I mean, I just got done, talked about our $400,000 problem earlier, but I think it's the succession planning to preserve the culture of our police department. And think about this, if you are one of the sergeants that potentially can now test for captain, it maintains that energy base, that everybody is in a very good place. At the lowest levels, you know, you've got Officer, who is now Detective Mathias, that was recognized earlier, you know, you've got, I mean, things are going good in our PD. And we need to figure out five to 10 years from now, how do we continue to do that? And I do think that the structure is a little bit, comes at a premium, but I do think that it's something that it will help us at least have two potential choices. Dean brings up one thing that is a math problem with our idea, and that is, even if these guys are promoted to captain tomorrow, is, are they going to have enough time and grade to actually be a chief or a candidate for a chief down the road? Are we still going to have the same problem? I think that's a valid point. And, you know, and I, but I do like the concept. I think that's probably a weakness. The $75,000 is a concern, but I, you know, I am very supportive of this process, and I hope that we can pass something like this. Thank you.
You're welcome. My personal thought is for it, but I, my thought is a little different in that going for a second captain, knowing another captain is about a year away from retirement, we'll just guess, we're not putting ourselves in a position where we're stuck with two captains. I mean, if we, down the road, decide that trying to find another Cassie would be the best way to go, a year later, you know, we still have that option. But there is a certain amount of urgency, you know. We've had, I don't know, Chief, how many city managers and city attorneys you've worked under, but?
I've lost count.
I bet it's well into the double digits. And Cassie, in 17 years, I'll bet you're, not triple digits, but it's up there. But the stability, we're paying the price for the stability in the police department today. You know, we've got a great group, a great core in, and unfortunately, they're all coming up for retirement. In my mind, we're much like Cypress was six months ago, with new city manager, new supervisors, all the experience walking out the door on the same day. You know, new city attorney over there. And we do need, there is some urgency to at least have somebody shadow Cassie. But I, I'm going to vote for it, but I want to point out that, I agree with Warren, I thank you for bringing this forward, but it's not, it's not do or die. You know, we're not deciding to build the building. This is, this is a change that we could look at in a year, if Bruce retires, and say, you know, maybe the civilian, maybe Dean was right, you know? So maybe the civilian in that spot was the way to go. I think part of the problem, and please weigh in, both of you, you know, Troy said, you know, is Cassie replaceable? You're going to end up with sainthood by the end of the evening, I think. But, you know, is a civilian, is a civilian capable of stepping into that position and replacing? I mean, I've worked with Cassie on budget issues and know the numbers are on her fingertips for the budgets, the phones. I mean, there's a lot of things, a lot of hats being worn by one person. So you guys feel that it's even something we could do?
Difficult to replace at that level, at the non-sworn level, at Cassie's support services manager, based on what she's been able to do for this city and filling those shoes, really difficult at the support services, non-sworn level. I mean, we have, we have good personnel throughout the organization and administrative ability throughout the organization, too. So that, that's not to say that there's not outstanding, non-sworn staff, both in police department and outside of the police department as well. But in terms of going, the likelihood of going out and being able to recruit for filling her shoes like we have today, that's really, really difficult. It's going to, it'll take time to transition that.
You're in agreement?
I will echo that. I mean, we are not going to be able to replace Cassie with the same quality and talent. Can we find a civilian manager that, you know, that can adequately do the job? Yeah, it's possible, but I would anticipate that to be a challenging process. You know, Councilmember Edgar talks about the math problem. And, you know, I look at this as potentially in the next year-ish, you know, there's, there could be all three positions at the top could leave.
Yes.
I imagine at least one of those would be filled with a promotion from the inside. But when I look at our command structure, which I think has a heck of a lot of influence on the culture that we speak of, the thought of two of those three positions coming from the outside is a big deal. And I think just for the, for the timing right now, you know, ensuring that at least two of those three are internal candidates, you know, goes a long ways to ensuring that cultural stability.
Okay. So the sense of urgency comes from the ability to hire now and then shadow Cassie.
Yes, definitely.
And there is, there is no guarantee, after the captain's test, that we have a candidate, correct?
They will have to prove worthy in the process.
Okay. Okay. Dean, would you like the chance to rebut?
Yep. You know, I was afraid we'd get this way by bringing it up in public here in the dais, and I want to re-stress that this is not, not a matter of individuals that are in seats or the culture that exists or any of that. Is Cassie replaceable? Yes, she is. None of us are irreplaceable, including Brett, including the city attorney, if it came down to that. Everybody in here is replaceable staff-wise. Would it be the same? No. Because the job that Cassie does is because Cassie made that job. She came in with one responsibility, and because of changes within the city's culture and within the city's management, she took on things that nobody else would take on and did them cheerfully. Whether it's the telephone system, the IT system, Homeland Security stuff, she's made a job for herself and excelled in that job. That's not the point here. We have no way of knowing, just promoting a sergeant, that we're going to have the same capabilities or the qualities, because you're looking for something that isn't out there. To say we can't recruit, I think, is wrong. We're not going to do it in the same timeframe that we're being faced with. Shelley made the comment, no to La Palma. You know, in talking about La Palma, this was just an offer, and it was a concept. Whether any of that could work out or not, I don't know. But the only place we're going to find, as policymakers and stewards of the community's money here, cost savings is going to be on consolidation of some sort. What I tried to say before is, we've consolidated the police department in terms of service to the community, and the community doesn't really understand it. And they're not upset about it. I've not had a single call from somebody saying, hey, a Cypress cop showed up at my door when I called for police assistance, or a Seal Beach officer, or, that I've heard of any from the other areas. So seemingly less, we've combined those departments. In fact, those departments meet the detective bureau. We have two detectives, and they've done a fabulous job of solving crimes, but they've worked with the other departments in the same process. And I don't know how many detectives each department has. I don't know what the structure is from the other departments. But if this council's going to look at reining in some costs, we need to be open to some of these kinds of thoughts. And it's clear to me that this is, that this is going to go through. Shelley made the comment, Councilmember Hasselbrink made the comment about promoting from within, and unfortunately, her tenure is less than some of us up here, and I don't mean that disrespectfully. The chief was really the first chief that's promoted from within. We've had outside chiefs that have come in in the past. And there was a point in time where Chief Mattern wasn't interested in the job. And it took some time with some interim-type situations before we were finally able to convince him that this was a place that he could retire in. And we made concessions on that particular point. Warren's talked about timeliness and an upcoming captain's test. We're not even prepared to do this yet. We're not prepared to promote from within at this particular point, because we don't know who's going to make it through the captain's test, and this whole thing may be nebulous. So at this point, I see this as a policy decision that is a responsibility of this The combined management and training that Councilmember Edgar talked about, the teaching and the training, both the captain teach at the academy, I don't know if the chief teaches down there, but I know there's an engagement within the community, and that's important and stays that way and needs to stay that way. And I don't mean anything disrespectful to those guys that are sitting in the position looking for the opportunity to advance. Back when McCreary was chief, he brought in canines, and the community supported that. In fact, Rotary Club donated one recently for Cypress. The Medical Center donated another canine. He brought in bicycle patrols, which we still have, but not really to the extent that it was. He brought in things to try and get officers to stay here rather than use this as a small department training ground, only to go other ways. We've still had that. We've had officers that have left here to go to other departments to enhance their career opportunities. And that's going to continue to be. It doesn't make any difference from the standpoint of whether there's two captains or one captain or not. I just want to make sure you guys, when you make the commitment, that we're going to spend another 80 grand, 75 grand, there's no money for it. There's nothing in the budget. We're not saying to PD, like we've done in the past, go ahead, but find it in your pie. You've already been allocated a piece of money. We've talked about some of that consolidation. We've talked about some of the money potentially coming in and being able to pay back the $800,000, a little bit less than that now, on the 800-megahertz system. We've got a lot of challenges, financial challenges, coming. I just don't think this has been thought through. I understand the urgency. I understand the reason behind it. And I'm not going to sit here six months from now and say, I told you so, because I hope it does work out. It has to work out for the benefit of the community. But as you guys in the Budget Subcommittee continue to work toward this, you need to realize, public safety is a different animal in terms of costs, both on the way they retire and the costs that they retire. And you're agreeing to this at this particular point, so hopefully, in looking at budget proposals coming in, somewhere this is filtered into that particular process. You know, quite frankly, $80,000, $75,000, that'd buy individual cameras for every officer in our department. Is that a higher priority for public safety, for community, from the standpoint of what we're doing? Many departments, Fullerton just outfitted every one of their officers with body cameras. LA is trying to do the same thing. I just think we need to be thinking deeper before taking the action. But I thank you for the opportunity to bring it forward, and thank you for the opportunity to talk about it and discuss it. Thank you.
Anyone else have motion?
I just have one clarification real quick, and I don't know if it's directed to the chief or the city manager. The support services manager, if we kept that at civilian, is there any possibility to promote from within with our existing staff?
It would be, if we kept it as civilian, we would open it up for recruitment in either in-house or out of the city. Anyone could apply for the position, yes. There would be an opportunity.
What's the likelihood of someone in-house that's a sworn officer, right? I think that's, that's your question.
It would be more, well, Todd, do you want to speak to that?
That's fine.
There is, that possibility exists.
Okay.
And I'm going to make the assumption that we'll more likely be able to promote from within with a sworn officer than we will with a civilian. But that's my assumption. With that, I'll make a motion to pass 9E as is.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye? No?
And all vote no.
Four to one? Okay. We'll go on to F.
Again, it has nothing to do with the existing staff, okay?
Troy, you pulled F. Would you like a staff report or a comment?
Yeah, just real quick, I'm trying to remember what it was. So I guess, real quick, staff report. Jason, we have the audit report that came out, and just for the community, and this is, I don't really have comments, I just would like you to just talk a little bit about the audit report and the summary, one or two findings and the significance of them. I always, if people ever do read these things online and they check it out, and people aren't familiar with reading the financial statements, some people get shocked when they say, we had a material finding, or we had some sort of finding. Something that was interesting with these statements that you don't see in corporate statements is that they actually issued three letters, depending on different components, you know, the, our ability to fund and certify, there was the financial statements itself and the controls. And so I, just for the community's sake, if you can just highlight from your perspective, because I don't want somebody to read this and go, God, the audit report came and they didn't even pull that.
Thank you. So, once a year, the city's required to go through an annual audit, and the audit encompasses an audit of the financial statements. It also covers an audit of the, what we call the GAN limit, or the appropriations limit, which is set each year, and it's a part of the budgetary process. And so the auditors look at that, and they perform agreed-upon procedures. And then they also evaluate internal controls. That's part of the internal control system that builds the framework for the financial statements and the reliability of the numbers. So in this year's audit, the auditors issued what's called an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. So that's the opinion that you achieve, you strive to achieve. And they also issued an opinion over the GAN limit and found no errors or issues there. As part of their review of internal controls, they did find, or have a couple of recommendations that they felt they needed to make, and so I'll go over those right now. It's important to note as well, they've labeled these deficiencies as significant deficiencies. Previously, the labeling of these deficiencies were called reportable deficiencies. And reportable just meant that it was required to be reported to those charged with covenants. They made a change to the auditing standards and felt like they could no longer use that word, reportable, so they came up with a new word called significant. And it's somewhat misleading in the sense that it uses a word that gives a connotation that it is significant, although it's not to downplay it either. It's important enough that they felt compelled to report to those charged with covenants. They did not classify these deficiencies that they labeled as significant as material. So that means they did not rise to the level that they felt was material to affect their opinion on the financial statements. So the first finding that they had dealt with business licenses, and they had discovered that, I'll read it to you. During our examination of business license cash receipts, we noted the following deficiencies. The audit log of transactions, including voids, reversals, and deletions of transactions entered into the system, is not reviewed. Cashiers can backdate transactions prior to a late fee assessment date, thereby waiving late fees. So there's a risk of misappropriation of So there's a risk of misappropriation of, of cash, and, um, management's response to that was that, um, the audit log consists of cash, a cash receipts report, which is printed from the system, and the report is reviewed for accuracy and completeness. Uh, the report is also reviewed by the, the finance assistant in my department to verify that the amounts entered into the system coincide with the actual cash amounts that are collected each day. Uh, but there's some system limitations that prevented us from, uh, running a report that actually reflected voids and reversals. So because of that system limitation, we weren't able to provide a report that was satisfying to the auditors. That, this issue will be addressed with the outsourcing of the business license function, which was approved last month by the city council. And it's also important to notice that ninety-nine percent of our, uh, cash received is really not in the form of cash. It's really not cash. It's checks or, um, credit card payments. And so the, the likelihood of, of fraud is, is diminished by the fact that over ninety-nine percent is not cash. The second finding that they had related to voids at the Recreation Center, and is similar in, in concept, just, um, they noted that voided transactions in the class system, which is a previous system, and that's one important thing to note as well, they're auditing the prior year. They're looking at the fiscal year thirteen fourteen. And so when they looked at the fiscal year thirteen fourteen, uh, voided transactions had not been approved, 'cause they, they did not show up on that report. Changes had been made by the department since then, but since it was after the date that the auditors were performing their review, they still felt compelled to report that. And, and that's part of management's response. The city recently moved to a new recreation system, and a report will, will be ran and has been ran daily that shows all voided transactions, which is reviewed and approved by management. And then lastly, the third finding related to lack of segregation of duties in, in really the Finance Department. And because of the limitation in personnel, there are overlapping responsibilities, and, um, and the auditors felt that they needed to, um, make the city council aware of that. And part of that is temporary in nature because of the, the turnover in the department, which has now been solidified with my, um, appointment a few months ago. And we feel confident that there are compensating key controls to, that would prevent and detect a fraud from occurring. And, um, the auditors wanted to go on record that they basically recommend hiring an additional staff person to further segregate those duties in, in the Finance Department. Um, and, but we felt that the city has sound, a sound internal control structure, and that there are, um, there are compensating key controls that would prevent a fraud from occurring.
Great. So, uh, just to close this off, so the audit report is an audit report issued to the city, gets put into the consent calendar and, you know, kinda gets filed away, and I just wanted to send a message that, to you and the auditors, and you're new, so this is how your first year with us, and it'll be a great experience when we get into the budget time. But, uh, you know, we are watching this stuff. We do look at it. Two, two of the findings that I, I had a little bit of concern with, and I, one of them, Corey, was in your area with the Parks and Recreation, two thousand fourteen dash zero two, where we have had issues on previous audit reports with cash receipts within the Parks and Rec. And so this was an area that we've talked about in, I think, two or three years ago in an audit report. This is a different issue now, and, uh, you've got a new system in place. So I, I think, you know, the, the good thing when you read an audit report, 'cause it is from the previous years, you get to kinda revalidate what, you might've made some good decisions up here, like when we outsourced, you know, the business license function, which was a finding here, bad problem, not significant, not material, to use your term, but, but we have fixed it since then. Corey has fixed the Parks and Rec issue. And then the lack of segregation and duty oversight, I think, is important because we just got done talking about consolidating functions, and when you're so small, sometimes you consolidate. I mean, just to keep it simple, it's hard to be the finance CFO and also be book and journal values into the GL, you know? And really, the message, I guess I would say to you and Brett, is the segregation is you two now versus adding somebody down below, and I was glad to see that you guys, you know, responded, 'cause it is an elective scenario. They're not requiring you to do it, they're advising you, so I thought that was a good choice. And that's it. Those were the only comments I had. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? Like to move the item?
Yeah, can I, I'd like to move the item F, please.
I'll second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Nobody? Okay. Let's go back to, um, nine B. And the reason I, I moved this over is we have to have a discussion. If, if people are in agreement with the conference in general, who's gonna go? And I would like to propose that Dean goes, as he's been leading, spearheading the, moving the city hall, and that this is, you know, right down that alley. And, um, is, any discussion?
I'll go with staff report.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and City Council. This item was, um, put on the agenda to discuss a upcoming conference that staff has been made aware of. It's
He's not here.
Community Development and
No.
Development Director and Public, oh, he's right here.
Sneaky's hiding.
Taking a shot at him.
He's hiding. He's hiding.
Yeah.
So, um, Mr. Mendoza and myself have researched the potential of a, it's called a Monterey model. And we've talked to previous city manager from the city of Monterey. We've talked to the current Assistant City Manager, City of Monterey. There is a model that's out there that provides a template for services that can be offered by cities in cooperation with a base, when the base is located in that city, which is, and Councilmember Gross is, is very familiar with this and had actually given the information to staff, and, and we appreciate that. So we've just continued to, to spearhead these efforts to research this as much as possible, um, so that we can be educated and the council can be educated if we have the possibility of moving our Civic Center facilities to the base, or a possibility of sharing in services where the city can provide various services, including recreation, including daycare, a lot of different models that the city of Monterey has done with maintenance services as well. We wanna be educated on this. We wanna educate the local base. We have contacts at the California State Military level in Sacramento. We have now contacts at the federal level. So we've made a lot of progress, and this is very good timing, bringing this forward to the city council. Um, the strong recommendation for Monterey is that we send staff out to see what this conference is all about and send a council member with us. And so that's what we're bringing forward to the council, and that's, that's what this item is about.
Question?
Um, so, I, I did have a chance to talk with the city manager on this item, and I, I'm very supportive of having our staff to be more informed of possibilities and then working the, um, I guess, the, whatever's allowed, and I certainly think that's gonna be important for us to gather information. And I would be supportive of a council member from us going, and I hope there's someone else, and not me, but, uh, i- if necessary, I'd be happy to try and support that. But, um, I, I would like to see us, uh, the council get behind this one. But that, back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, a question. You broke this item up into whether we should support and who it should be, but, uh, did you do that on purpose, 'cause we're gonna talk about where does the council meeting move if it moves next, or should we talk about that now?
Yeah, that will be, that's part of the discussion, so.
Okay. Uh, yeah, when we do part of this recommendation, I'm fully supportive of, uh, by the way, Dean, thank you. I mean, this is, uh, this is excellent. This is exactly what we should be doing. This is, uh, taking a best practice and bringing it back and giving it to staff and going, so just go. Uh, the, the question I have is moving the council meeting to cover that. We definitely wanna have everybody here. When we move into Wednesdays, um, some of us spend a lot of time on the road right now, and it, it's harder for Wednesdays. Uh, you have to fly back here and then take off again. And I was just curious if we can talk about maybe moving the council meeting to the following Monday. Um, this midweek council stuff because of holidays is, is really tough, um, right now.
Yeah, from a staff perspective, we've looked at, um, other possible dates, and Monday the twenty-third, uh, the Monday, the twenty-third of March, we're gonna meet on Monday the twenty-third of February, too. Monday the twenty-third of March works. It's, it's, in effect, it's moving the regularly scheduled council member from March sixteenth to March twenty-third, and that works. We don't have any other scheduled meetings. We, we do have a, a lot of upcoming meetings, uh, both in terms of budget, budget department meetings through the budget process and the budget process itself, and, um, a special, another community meeting coming up next Monday, but that one fits if it was March twenty-third, if it works with the council.
I was also concerned that, you know, the, the seventeenth, you're coming back, and there's no time to discuss anything with you except the day of the council meeting. So I would support the twenty-third if it doesn't conflict anybody.
Yeah, I, just my quick input. Uh, the twenty-third works good for my calendar. I like the Mondays. Um, I'd also be in support of, of Dean going up there. I've been at a couple of events on our base with him, and you can definitely tell he's a, a known entity there. Um, he's got a relationship with the ranks all the way on up, and, um, I think that's gonna be very important as we move forward with this, um, getting support internally and then also on the higher up, so, just my input.
Anyone else? Dean, you willing to go?
Yes, thank you. That we better ask, you know, before we make a motion.
And we just have, um, just to let you, the council know, we, we had preliminarily at least booked the registration, and in the event that the council approved it, it's cancelable, um, but we haven't booked the flight yet. So we were waiting to, if the council approves it, then tomorrow we'll book the flight for that, too.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion. I'd move that, uh, following staff recommendation for one, two, three, and then four, I would make the exception of moving the council meeting to the twenty-third of March. And, uh, and in addition to that is, I would support Councilmember Gross attending on our behalf. That'd be my motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? No opposed? Okay, we're gonna take five minutes while we set up for the budget discussion. Budget.
I'm just
Brett, you wanna start out?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This, um, is really the kickoff of the budget process, budget season for the upcoming fiscal year fifteen sixteen, which will start July first of this calendar year. And, um, what we're going to have for you tonight is a review. The Administrative Services Director, Jason Almam, will go through, um, a brief review of our results, which we've already touched on, for fiscal year thirteen fourteen, um, a surplus that we had for that fiscal year. The main focus will be on fiscal year fourteen fifteen, the current year that we're in, the July first two thousand fourteen through June thirtieth of two thousand fifteen period. And it's primarily, it's a review of all the expenditures, a review of all the revenues, primarily in the general fund, and where we are in terms of budget to actual and where we estimate that we will end this fiscal year. And then as, in terms of the kickoff for fifteen sixteen, Jason has a preliminary budget, and we've gone to all the departments, put together a preliminary budget. It's, it's early on, it's a changing, fluid document, but it's an initial estimate of expenditures and revenues for the upcoming fiscal year. Where we are now, um, initial budget difference between expenditures and revenues, and some recommended solutions on how to close that, that gap, as we call it, and, um, and take any comments from the Budget Subcommittee as we go through this presentation as well. So with that, um, I will give it over to Jason and
Dean has a comment?
Go through.
You know, the last time we did this, I raised the issue at the time, and apparently, I guess I didn't make myself clear from my perspective. We have a staff report. It's twelve pages long with graphs and figures, and that's what we have to work with. And what I'm seeing start again, which happened the last time, is a PowerPoint presentation that doesn't reflect in the same format of what we're talking about, and we don't have a copy of the PowerPoint presentation. So it's very difficult when you start talking about different items when they're not following the staff report that you already gave us. I've been through the staff report that we have. How that staff report's gonna play out to your PowerPoint, there may be things in the PowerPoint that's not in what we got, and maybe things here that we've got that aren't included in the PowerPoint. So it makes it extremely difficult. And I would hope, once again, that as we're going through the budget, whatever you give us as part of a staff report is whatever we're gonna talk about in the same format of any PowerPoint. That being said, go ahead and do your, do your
Okay, we, we'll keep that in mind as we go through the budget process.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So as Brett mentioned, we'll be going over the thirteen fourteen activity for revenues and expenditures and fund balance. We'll also be looking at fourteen fifteen, the mid-year review of revenues and expenditures. And then we'll also be looking at next year's, uh, financial forecast for fifteen sixteen. And actually, before I get started, I wanted to just point out and invite the council to feel free to, uh, stop me at any point in time and ask questions if you have any.
I'll do it now, and I apologize. I do have a copy of the PowerPoint. Didn't realize it was on the dais. Thank you.
Yeah, so the PowerPoint really does encompass ninety percent of what is already in the staff report. It really follows the same flow as the staff report. We've added some additional graph, graphical designs, you know, to kind of display trend information. So there is a little bit of new information, but it largely follows the flow of the staff report. So thirteen fourteen, uh, looking at slide three. We were projecting in June to, um, end the thirteen fourteen year, um, at the time that the budget was adopted for the fourteen fifteen budget, we projected the year to close at eight-point-one million. And it turns out, as the books were closed and the audit was completed, uh, that we actually ended at about eight-point-two-seven million. So a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars better than projected with a surplus of four-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars. Largely, that's due to revenues, um, coming in better than projected and, uh, offset by some increases, um, in expenditures, which really is largely due to that payment of the side fund liability for, for PERS. Slide four, this shows the thirteen fourteen general fund revenues, and what we're doing here is we're just comparing the actual to the amended budget. And so the year ended with, you know, eight-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars of revenue beyond what was the amended budget. And in terms of better than what we projected, um, the, the largest reason for us on the slide before ending at eight-point-two-seven million really relates to utility users' tax revenue, and it's really almost entirely, uh, Southern California Edison electricity revenues coming in at ninety-two thousand better than projected. We also had property tax. Go ahead.
Yeah, can I interrupt Mayor at this point?
Please.
And ask a question? You know, the city had an issue or had a concern back on utility users' tax, uh, with Southern California Edison, when we got big bumps from the standpoint of the mat of, of, uh, costs. And the decision was made by the council at that time, I was not on it, I don't think any of us up here were, where instead of six percent, uh, on the utility users' tax for electrical, uh, the city made a decision to reduce it to four-point-five percent with the proviso that it would be reevaluated every year, and ultimately was allowed to sunset and go back up. And the rationale for going back up was that that additional percent and a half was going to be able to make the payment, uh, when they purchased Laurel Park. And that was part of what was discussed at that point. I know when the telephone aspect of the utility users' tax was discussed and put in, um, there was discussion that if we wound up making more money coming in than what had been projected, that we would take a look at that. And I would suggest that as part of this process, especially the ad hoc committee going forward, um, if we anticipate that the electrical users' tax is gonna continue, uh, to increase based on these projections for whatever continue to increase based on these projections for whatever reason, we may want to look at a temporary reduction to the citizens. I know it's hard to give up revenue, but at the other side of it, the utility users' tax in many cities is a thing that they look at as being a controllable expense, and the purpose of it was for specific services. So I'll just put that out there.
Thank you.
I just need to rebut. The one thing you said, I totally agree with the utility users' tax for electric, but the utility users' tax for telecommunications, Measure DD in 2012, actually lowered that by 1%. And although even up here in the council, we thought that it was a rewrite of the regulations and could expand the base, it is a matter of fact that the utility users' tax for telecommunications actually nets about a half a percent less than it ever did, never increased, and never went over the base amount. And I don't know if you have specific numbers, but I just want to clarify that because I know that was a, an item that we've talked about multiple times up here. And the, and I would say the utility users' tax right now as a source of revenue, I think the bigger issue is Edison has a rate case right now with the PUC to increase it again, over and above what they did for taking the expansion of the underground lines over the foothills. And if we wanted to get active there, we should probably be making public comments and going through the process to try to help defeat the rate case, but that's all. Thank you.
And I do have some slides that cover some of the history behind electric utility users' tax revenue on 16, and then also telecommunications UUT revenue on 17, but I'll get into that as we move throughout the presentation. So, closing out the year, I'll go to the next slide, just to look at expenditures. This compares actual to amended budget for expenditures. And like I said previously, in, in police, the, we had a payoff of the side fund liability. That was $261,281 that was made and approved by the council in June. And so, had that not occurred, the police department's budget would have been under budget. And in non-departmental, there was an over-budget amount largely due to workers' comp costs, and, which was partially offset with insurance reimbursements. So on the previous slide, we would have seen miscellaneous revenues exceeding the budgeted amounts. So looking at the budgetary fund balance at June 30, the final numbers, we ended fund balance with 8.3 million. Seven million of that was spoken for or assigned by, by City Council, and 1.2 million was unassigned. It's important to note that the 1.2 million dollar balance really relates to and has been transferred to those two new internal service funds that we created in the current year in 1415. And so, those amounts have been transferred down the current year.
So Jason?
Yeah.
On this slide, the PERS reserve at 3.150, just to kind of glue concepts together. So when we get ready to start talking about this for 201415, which will be coming up next, the, that amount is a amount that took us to a certain percentage of total funding. And I just want to remind on the council, you know, the next battle of fun that we're going to have up here is this will be too much now because our unfunded liability came down, and then we got to figure out, because we didn't clarify our, our reserve policy on mechanically how this would fix itself. And so, the 3.15 then really is bigger than 8.274, especially next year. And I just don't want us to get in the mechanism of spending. And I know Glenn and yourself have had ideas to the ad hoc committee where we use that as a mechanism for funding our unfunded liability further, or helping offset that $400,000 problem. But I just wanted to let the council know from the ad hoc committee, we see an opportunity there. We also see an opportunity, the emergency fund was captured on a percentage basis of 25% of total budget, which, right now, the budget's going up every year at a minimum by the $400,000 PERS amount. But, so as that goes up, we'll either have to adjust or bring it down. So there's mechanisms in place that are going to be creating reserves because it's this general fund money, and I just wanted to make that point. And, and I know we'll end up talking about it later, but it's a good time to make that. Thank you.
Thank you. So now looking at the 1415 budget overview, we have the amended budget, which, you know, projects basically a 1.2 million dollar decline in fund balance, which largely, the 1.1 million of that 1.2 is the transfer to those two new internal service funds. We're actually projecting, though, the fund balance to only decrease by 722,000 despite that 1.1 million dollar transfer out. And so that's creating a budget surplus of 493,000. And as we'll dig into it, the large part of that reason is 302,000 related to expenditures, projected to be less than what was budgeted, and then 191,000 relates to revenues, which are projected to exceed the amended budget amounts. On the revenue side, a large part of the story is sales and use taxes, $89,000 better than what was budgeted. And sales and use tax revenue is projected to be 5.5% higher than the previous year, and 3% over the budget. And this is mainly due to strong growth in building and construction and restaurants. Also, as we discussed earlier on utility users' tax revenue, electric utility tax revenue is projected to be up 94,000, or actually, in total, UUT revenue is going to be up 94,000, and 81,000 of that relates to electric utility revenue. So what we're, we've recommended, council approve our adjustments to the revenue budget, and those adjustments amount to 191,000, which would shore up the amended budget based upon where we project the ending balances to be. So we're projecting revenues to be 12.4 million.
Where, where are those, where's the 191,000 being spent?
That's just on the revenue side. So we're expecting the 191,000 property taxes to exceed what we budgeted.
Oh, revenue, okay.
So it all adds up to 191, exactly.
Okay.
Jason, quick question. The 1.1 million to transfer to the two new funds, can you break down what funds and how much in each fund is going to go?
Exactly. I'll actually go to the next, this slide that we're on right here. So the 700,000 is the transfer to the police capital replacement fund, and the 400,000 is to the transfer to what I'll call the facilities capital replacement fund for parks and facilities and streets and the pool. And so, as you can see here, we, I've broken out really kind of operating expenditures and transfers and non-operating. Non-operating being those two large transfers to create those two new internal service funds. And then we also had some, some carryover amounts related to the general plan, and then supplemental appropriation that was approved by council earlier in the year for 40,000. We're projecting the budget to, or actual expenditures to be less than the budget to the tune of 302,000. And in the police department, that is largely, well, 237,000 of that 302 is in the police department, and that's primarily due to savings related to vacancies that we've had. So in terms of what we were recommending, we're recommending that the city council increase the budgeted expenditures by 15,000. This is for, 5,000 for community development, and 10,000 for recreation and community services. This is needed to shore up their budgets. The 5,000 for community development related to, I think it's contractual services, related to some final permitting or inspections related to the medical center. And then recreation and community services, there was a unanticipated payout that's expected due to an upcoming retirement.
Due to what again?
A retirement for an employee in recreation and community services. It's not the entire amount, but it's over half the amount.
Now, the 5,000, excuse me, is that okay?
So the 5,000 for community development?
The 5,000 for community development for contractual services, doesn't that wash?
It does. So there's offsetting revenue on the revenue side of the fence. But the department still has to account for the expenditures on the expenditure side, so it needs to increase its budgeted amounts to allow for that. So it really is budget neutral, if you will, because we're increasing revenues by So what we've done is we've also, like Brett said, we've put together a preliminary budget for 1516, and taking where we project beginning fund balance to be, looking at revenues and then looking at expenditures, we've worked with all the departments, and we've analyzed the different cost factors, and we've put together a preliminary forecast, which is intended to kind of set the, set the budget, you know, process in motion as we move through the next couple of months and work on the 1516 budget. On the revenue side, we're projecting revenues to increase by 672,000, and that's largely related to property tax, sales and use taxes, and then also charges for services. I, I'll get into some details in terms of what those numbers are based on, but I put together a slide that shows the property tax revenue and where it's been since 910. And you can see the, the impact that the economic situation had in 89. There's kind of a delay on assessed values, so it, it hit its lowest point in 1112 and has slowly climbed since then. On sales and use tax revenue, it's more in line with the actual economy, and so you can see a gradual increase in sales and use tax revenue over the last five, six years. As I mentioned previously, I have included some information for electric utility users' tax revenue. So since 910, for a couple of years, they were flat, and then it dipped in 1112. And then since then, there's been steady increases, and they're projected to continue to climb into future years. And based upon information provided by Southern California Edison, they've projected utility users' tax revenue to increase approximately 3%.
If I may, at that, just to kind of carry on where we started with, with what you talked about, about fighting the increase, that's like climbing a new mountain, too.
Yeah.
And I think the reason that the tax went down, that the council chose to put it down is because that was during the period when Gray Davis was in, and utility rates, particularly on, on electric rates spiked really high. And the residents came in and said, "We need some relief. You're making money off of this in the, in the tax thing." And so, if Edison continues to climb, it means we get more money because we're working on a percentage. And that may be where we would want to look at giving some relief back to the taxpayer with the area that we can, that we can control. But what they did at that time was put it in a, in a language, "We can reduce taxes, we can't raise taxes." But they put it in a method where it was renewable each year, the reduction, and that way they were able to take it back up to the full 6% at the time that Laurel Park was purchased. So I think if we do something like that, or even consider something like that, we make sure we follow that same game plan that allows us to raise it back up without having to go back out from the standpoint of vote, not, would not exceed what it currently is.
But if I may, Councilmember Gross, so I think the period you speak about, that Enron was doing all that crazy trading of electricity, and I know personally, my electric bill went from the hundreds to over 600. I think that was the emphasis for the council to take action.
Right.
I don't know that the gradual rate increase that we're seeing here is the same magnitude. So I think we'd have to kind of really look at the numbers and see how they kind of pencil out. Now, the other thing I guess I would bring up at this point is, those of us that have gone to a solar power generation, like myself, our utility tax is quite low, if not zero. And I brought this up with the previous city manager, not that I'm in favor of taxing it, but I think there is a nexus of the electricity that's created and put onto the grid that gets consumed somewhere, and maybe that's something we have to kind of look at as well. Not, again, not that I'm in favor of taxing, but I think in terms of just the fairness of it, I think that we have to kind of look at those.
Good point.
Back to you, Mayor.
Okay, so I'll move on to the next slide if no one else has any more questions. On telecommunications, UUT revenue, I've shown the revenues since the adoption of the measure that had a decrease in that UUT base. And you can see that since 1213, it's really just remained flat, and it has not come back since then.
Whose idea was that? Yours?
No comment.
So, as I mentioned previously, charges for services are expected to be up 274,000. This is largely or primarily due to the, what we factored in for parking meter revenue of 250,000. I've included some of our assumptions, just so I can kind of lay it out and put it before you. And this is estimated revenue that may need to be decreased if the parking meters are not in place and up and running by July 1st. But we've included it here as a placeholder, just so we can see what the potential revenue impact is on the budget. And we actually believe that this is a very conservative number, and so likely could be more.
It's also just to note right here, as it gets into the expenditures, we've also included additional enforcement on the expenditure side to offset some of it, and we haven't bumped up the parking fines of revenue. So we're, we're feeling pretty conservative about it, but it's a number. And as we get more information and present it to the council, as we get farther in the budget process, if we need to modify it, we'll let you know.
And the reality that this project will be procured, installed, and implemented in three and a half months is realistic?
It's, it's hopeful. And so, Stephen, you want to, you want to give your optimistic spin on this?
Come on, Stephen.
Oh, you're there. You're there now.
Yeah, I wish I was hiding right there.
Yeah.
No, we, we are realistic that we can get close to the July 1 date. We've studied it. We've done a lot of outreach. We've compiled that outreach, as we do it, into a report that'll come to City Council when the RFP is ready for the City Council to see. We're almost there with the RFP, which will include the installation and, and some construction costs related to that installation. Some curbs and bump outs need to be done to facilitate the meters, so cars aren't bumping into the meters. So we're getting close. We've, we've made a lot of friends in the industries. We've had a lot of help from other city employees out there, and we're working on ways to mitigate issues before it comes to council.
Yeah, I guess I would just say, as a member of boards of two organizations on the street affected, you can imagine that there's a tremendous amount of pressure, you know, of, hey, is this the best idea? And, you know, again, as one of five, I still think it's the right idea, and I'm still supportive of it. I think it's something we need to do. And, you know, some, sometimes you got to, this is just one of those hard decisions, but I think this is something that's really needed, and I'm staying the course with it.
We also, you know, have received some questions from council members related to the outreach, the potential mitigation, as Stephen had mentioned. The city of Seal Beach has helped us as a partner in analyzing this. So in our meetings that we've had with staff in going forward with the analysis of the parking meters, we've invited them, and the finance director there is kind of their expert in parking, and she's come in and given us some really good ideas. And some of that can be used toward ideas for mitigation for that street that you're mentioning there. So we're hopeful of having a solution, but we're, it's, we are making progress. We do want to get it to the council, but we need to be ready to, to give it to you. The other part is, you'll see it on the expenditure side, but on, when I call it the fully loaded at this point expenditure estimated to at this point expenditure estimated for 1516, Jason has included in there 100,000 for hardware for meters. So there is going to be a potential to finance that. So we're trying to be conservative and put that into the estimated expenditures right now.
I'm a little confused because that was one of about four or five budget gap closures for the existing fiscal year.
Yeah, the existing fiscal year, the budget gap closure that we had in there is estimated revenues of 30,000. So at one time, we had a bigger number and we pared that down. We tried to be conservative with 30,000. We don't know that we'll reach the 30,000. I mean, it may not be likely at this point, but in terms of where we are in our overall general fund revenues for 1415, we're in good shape. And that was included. There was 30,000 included in that gap closure.
Okay, so in regards to this particular thing, as far as meters are concerned, the rationale behind it was it was going to be a revenue source that would help mitigate some of the issues that we have. We've got green curbs all over. We've got two-hour parking posted signs all over, especially in areas that have been impacted by the high school. And this provided the opportunity for us to recover those that are ignoring those two-hour signs.
Yeah, it's about traffic circulation, moving, parking that is sitting for long periods of time in existing stalls. We needed to analyze the opening of the parking structure at the hospital. So we've had some analysis with that. We've had them involved in our project. But it's about traffic circulation throughout the entire city and recovering our costs more so than just a revenue. It's not a revenue enhancement. It's about traffic circulation.
Okay.
And I do agree, this is a good idea, but I also know the ad hoc committee is going full force into budget season. And I'm glad I'm not on that if all of a sudden, because of construction or delays or whatever happens in the procurement process, that, you know, oops, never mind, that 250,000 just went away, but go find it someplace else. So I just want to make sure that that's realistic.
I would also say, we contemplated the 30,000 in the current year. Maybe we should make an adjustment down and not book that. And Jason, I don't know if you-
I've already budgeted zero for the current year.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Okay.
So the mid-years factor that in.
Because I don't think we made that clear when Dean had asked that question.
So that pretty much covers revenues. We'll jump now into expenditures. So revenues we're expecting to exceed by 672,000, but you'll see on the expenditure side, we're projecting a $1.2 million increase in expenditures. And I've actually put together a kind of a slide to show where general fund expenditures have been over the last couple of years. And in terms of the slope of the curve of that line, it's roughly 3% growth year over year. As you can see though, it dipped into 11, a little, you know, more steady decline in 1112, 1213, and a pretty steep decline in 1516. Part of that is due to one-time costs. And then also, as the PERS actuary was here earlier today, we're projecting an increase of approximately $288,000 in retirement costs. So for miscellaneous, the contribution rates are projected to go from 11% of payroll to 27% of payroll. And we knew that that was, there was going to be an increase because our, on the miscellaneous side, we had a side fund surplus and we knew that that was going away. We knew that rates were going up, but we didn't anticipate them going up, in this case, more than double fold.
So Jason, can you just clarify though, the 288 in retirement costs? I just want to make sure my story is consistent. So it's actually four something, but your recommendation here as a coming out position, and this is something that Rich and I kind of debated in the ad hoc, was you're going to split that 400 to pay 288 out of the operating funds in the general fund. And you're also going to, at some point down the road, also talk about taking the other half out of reserves, right?
The 288 is the actual estimated impact in the current year. And that looks at safety and miscellaneous. On the miscellaneous side, we're projecting a $317,000 hit increase, but there's going to be savings on the safety side. The numbers that the actuary shared with us earlier today are projected, and they're projections based upon the valuation that was done several years ago. And so that valuation is using information that is really old. And so the numbers are inflated by a couple hundred thousand. So the actual impact on this year's budget is the 288 on a net basis citywide.
And you're going to take that directly out of the operating general fund, not the reserves?
Exactly, and that's what we're recommending.
Could I ask you to go back to the slide that shows the budgets, the budget number? One before that. If I was just allowed one comment tonight, it would be right here, that this is a 10% increase in costs. That's really unsustainable for really any city. And this is, you know, this is alerting us that we're going to have, it's going to be a lot closer, tighter to balance the budget this year than it has been. Even with revenues increasing almost $700,000, we're still going to be $550,000 short as things stand right now. So that's where we're starting from.
Good point. Thank you.
It almost flies in the face though of where we've tried to be in the past. And that's, we don't spend more than we take in. And if we're focusing on this, like, okay, how many more years are we going to be doing that? Is that, again, I guess I'm thinking more to the ad hoc committee budget wise, is this something prudent that we do? Because, oh, next year, by the way, da-da-da-da-da happened, and so it's another 10%. There's a point where we get so far in that we can't get back out. And while we talked about budget closure items last year, I'm not sure what items we had talked about that actually got implemented. You know, the billboard advertising along the freeway, I don't know where that is. I don't know, can't even remember at this point what some of the other items were. But we were taking a hardcore approach last year that in order to, in order to make what we did, we were going to have to do these things. And it's kind of like, oh, well, numbers came in higher, we got more revenue. So it's not the same punch. But with the actuarial tonight and some of the discussions you guys have had, I don't know how we consciously do that.
The PERS, you know, the PERS is going to be a tough, tough one. It's, you know, totally unseen, I believe, not predicted by anybody. And all of a sudden, you know, we're looking at $400,000. And we're going to maybe work on adjusting that, but any adjustment we're able to make for this year, we're going to pay for double in three or four years. So, you know, to remain true to where we are, you know, that's going to be a realistic number.
Well, his comment about possibly qualifying for hardship, I think we need to just consider that as an automatic at this particular point.
What the hardship really does-
It just spreads it out.
-evenly with a 3% increase.
Right.
So a few of the others, there's one or two plans. The second plan really gives you a reduction the first two years, but you pay for it. The leveling plan, to me, is the most realistic. But there are, you don't just apply for hardship. You do have to give your union some information about, you know, that there'll be some temporary unfunded portions. They're going to have to agree. But, I mean, that's why I brought it back to this slide. This is going to, this is our problem right here. If you boil down the whole presentation, it boils down to this slide and the difference in the numbers, that, you know, we're going to be, we're going to be negative about $600,000 to start.
And so the departure of three of our top high grossing management personnel from PD is just going to have to be put off a couple of years.
Yeah, I knew it was going to go full circle on that one. But so one other thing, I think Dean, to a bigger picture, you know, we are being a little bit inconsistent in our messaging, I think, and I think that's a fair assessment. I mean, you know, we talked about the first decision we made earlier with the police and it increases it by 75,000 and we all have reasons why. And, but, I mean, even when you look at tax, the utility users' tax for electricity or any of these other ones, you know, something that started when Dean was really focused, and he still is, but on the City Hall move and we started, there's two ad hoc committees that were assigned when that idea came along. Warren and Dean got together and they're doing the needs assessment of what do we need for City Hall. And then at this, at that point, Rich and I were on the financing side of what, how do we do that? How do we afford it? And then we said, okay, you know, City Hall by itself doesn't make, you know, a lot of sense to go tell the community, hey, we're going to do something. But how do we try to change that revenue, you know, that line for the next 10 to 15 years out? Because this isn't a problem, I mean, we're reacting right now because we got punched in the gut, but the reality is, this is our real future and we don't have a revenue line. And, you know, and again, we, the last thing we should be talking about is even as factual it is, as strong conservatives here, is cutting a utility users' tax, since that's right now is lifeblood. It's the right philosophical thing to do at the wrong time unless we're going to change the revenue line at some point. And so when we talk about City Hall and all these things and we look at this, and then, you know, and JM came in and took another shot at the downtown idea, but let's just call it the revitalization of LoSalle, we got to find a way to change the revenue trajectory. And whether it's structuring the boulevard or whatever to be able to draw the right businesses, whether it's doing something with the hospital, whether it's the parking, whether it's something unique, even our revenue gap ideas aren't working out too well yet. And so I think this is a bigger issue. And, you know, one of the ideas that was floated in the finance committee for City Hall is, you know, at some point, you do like the school district and you package a bond that allows you to make real change in the city and really figure out how, as long, and package it in the way that it's about economic development, not just moving City Hall. And I just want to insert that here because these types of problems are going to take big ideas to get passed and they've got to have patience to let them gestate for the next five to 10 years. And we've got a real problem here. And again, I think all this stuff, it's easy to kind of look at our inconsistent discussions, even in this meeting, but I think right now, this is healthy. We've all got to throw all the ideas out there and the criticisms, but it's still, we're not going to fix this in this year. And, you know, it's just, it's really an eye opener. And hopefully, you know, as we're going through too with staff, I know Jason, as you're on, it's nice to have fresh eyes on the finance side and Glenn at your side there. But I'm still not sure how we, how we close this. Thank you.
So yeah, the budget gap is actually 390,000. It is important to note that on this page, there is 309,000 in one-time costs. So if you look at that comparatively, the budget gap, we wouldn't expect expenditures to continue to grow at that same rate of pace. And also it includes on this slide, the 1.2 million. So not just the 309 of one time, but also the $288,000 increase in PERS costs. But on this page, we've got, I've shown the PERS contribution rates since 2008. The blue line is miscellaneous and the red line is safety. And at least looking at just next year, you can see, actually, the red line dips a little bit. That's the savings that we're experiencing that's offsetting slightly the huge ramp up in costs related to miscellaneous. And so you can see how they've been fairly, at least for miscellaneous, consistent, you know, in the seven, you know, percent range, 7% of payroll. Then they bumped up a bit in 2011 and then they stayed relatively flat until, really, until this year.
So this is the slide we send with the thank you note to the CalPERS board for putting us in a different pool, correct?
Exactly.
Yeah.
So on this page, what I'm showing here is the projected employer payment of the unfunded liability for just miscellaneous. And so the payment of the unfunded liability is just one piece of what we owe for PERS for miscellaneous. And, but this is the piece that really is the additional cost that we're paying in 1516, we're projecting to pay. And I've put three different columns. There's one called the standard amortization, and that's what the actuary was here today to talk about. It's built in to their actuary report. And it's, the $317,000 number is the impact that we've projected and built into our current forecast. So 200, it's, I mentioned the 288,000, that is reduced by the savings on the safety side, which I haven't shown on this page, but wanted to keep it simple. And so here, you've got 317,000 projected based upon that standard amortization. The actuary also talked about a pool relief program that would provide, you can see in the first year, $100,000 of savings. So instead of having to make a payment of 317, it would be 214,000. And then you move over to the final column and there's that hardship projection of costs, which is basically a 30-year fixed. It's not fixed in terms of dollars, but it's fixed as a percentage of payroll. And it actually would be more, you know, more expensive, at least initially in year one. But what it would do is it would level out and each year thereafter, it just increases based upon their projected increase in payroll, which is 3%.
So Jason, can I ask you, this slide, is this, this is just the incremental amount over and above what we pay today, right?
Exactly.
So if you post this online to go, like Dean said, with the staff report, can you just, I mean, the shocking thing about this is this is the incremental amount. This is not the total amount that we get every year. This is brand new.
Right.
Is there a way to put that on this slide before you post it up as part of the meeting minutes?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
What I wanted to point out here though is, is the concern, I guess, with the pool relief, although it might be enticing to want to go for that $100,000 of relief, what actually is happening there is you're underpaying and you're incurring interest, which is accruing to our balance. So you'll see in years three, four, and on, the actual payment really ramps up. And at the bottom of the slide, I've shown that on a percentage of payroll basis, while if you're chasing after that low initial year of 22%, it ramps all the way up to 39% and stays at 39% for about 15 years. With the hardship, it's relative, it's flat at 30% of payroll. And so while it may be hard in the initial year, it does make it a little easier budgetarily to try to hit that year after year.
Jason, just one other question. So the hardship, I mean, the challenge with this is this, eat all of these, you're only showing six years of what could be a 20- to 30-year horizon. And the challenge that I have with the hardship plan is it's sexy in the beginning. It looks like, oh yeah, we're going to get in and it's going to be smoothed out. I'm more concerned, as I talked to Glenn and you, I don't believe the unfunded liability is real for the long term, especially last year, we made 18% rate of return. You know, we took a catastrophe that happened four or five years ago and we then made all new adjustments and new assumptions, put everybody in different pools and started looking forward and said, now we got to all catch up. So what happens if you lock into a hardship case? You don't have the flexibility. You're signing up for a percentage of payroll. And the economy does get better, the rate of return maintains over 10% versus 7.5. You know, again, last year and the year before, almost 18% both years. Again, we take the bad glasses off. And we lock into this, you know, do we pay it off faster and go to zero faster? Or do we lock into this no matter what and it just keeps on going out to 30 years?
They'll never get to zero.
We'd have to check with the actuary to see what the impact is, but the, there is only a one-time election. So once you elect for the hardship and you opt for that 30-year amortization, you cannot opt for it again.
Yeah, because in the chart that you guys showed this morning, or this morning, it feels like this morning, this afternoon on the unfunded liability, it shows that the curve comes down towards zero. And then it's just a, when does it hit bottom? And so my question is, does, even though you're only showing six years, does this eventually hit zero when you're funded?
In the 30-year, it doesn't hit zero until year 30.
Okay.
Whereas the other, the pool relief and the standard amortization really hit zero around years 18 to 20.
And all of the high years of rate of return, the mechanisms that the board put in place smooths it, so even if it's 18, it normalizes it down to an average. So we never get to realize the benefits of the market recovering quickly. So we never get to realize the benefits of the market recovering quickly or losing quickly. I don't know, I just, I, I think when you do bring this back for the final, I'd like to see the total schedule and so that we can look in past year six to 30.
Okay.
To find out what happens and if we're locked into something we can't get out of, even if everything's going great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jason, because even on the, real quick, on the standard amortization, you have the employer contribution rate as a percentage of starting at 27%, moving up to 35%. As Troy mentioned, if the market overvalues or values it better, that will go down, correct?
As the actuary mentioned earlier today, it would be smoothed in, so there's a five-year smoothing. So that's good and bad. It's good when there's a big loss, it would be smoothed in over five years, but also if there's a big gain, like we had in 13, 14 of 18%, it's also smoothed in over five years.
But the hardship, it's 30% of payroll regardless of what happens. So there's no wiggle room in there, but in the standard amortization or the pool relief, there is based on the market conditions.
Really what the hardship is doing is it's looking at our liability as of today and it's amortizing that over a 30-year period. Now, that liability can actually grow because if there's a fair value loss in the future, then we would have an additional liability that we would have to, to deal with. And then the actuary would probably, we'd have to confirm with them, but I believe it's a five-year roll-in, so it, and we wouldn't be able to opt for another 30-year amortization because it's, it's a one-time election.
So comparing it to almost your home loan, this is a fixed rate versus a variable rate and you just take your chances? And you can't pay off the 30-year early?
Right.
Am I oversimplifying it or?
Yeah, that's what my concern is.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at a.
Yes, I don't know if the, if the actuary answered, on the 30-year, it is, it's a fixed and it's going to go up 3% every year for 30 years and you don't get to zero till the end of the 30 years.
Right.
But if, the question would be if we have a great, if we have a great economy and great revenue increases, could the council determine to pay more, pay that down sooner, prepay, prepay the mortgage?
I mean, I'm just looking at how I, we finance our home and these are the exact same questions that we ask. And one of the first things is, is, is there a penalty for paying it off early? Is there a vehicle to pay it off early?
Yeah. Yeah. I just want to weigh in on that question because the actuarial valuation is done every year. So you're not locking into a payment guaranteed for the next 30 years. It's going to be reset every year depending upon what the actuarial report shows. So I'm going to give an extreme example. Let's say that the return on investment is so great in the next year that you produce $6 million in investment return and your unfunded liability goes away. Then all your payments against the unfunded liability would go away because you no longer have an unfunded liability. As soon as your unfunded liability gets to zero, the only payment you're going to be making every year is your normal cost payment, which is the payment you make for the service that's rendered by employees for that particular year. And I think that's what Councilmember Edgar is asking, is that what if we continue to have really good years in PERS, what happens to our payment? Well, that payment, I believe, would be reset every year based upon the actuarial report for that year.
And we know that from the, because my concern is, you know, the, the first two options have, depending on situations and that 30%, there is no variable. So what you're saying is, it's taking into the assumption that the value of the investment is going to be exactly what we thought it was going to be?
Exactly correct. It's based on them earning 7.5% every year.
Okay.
So when they tell you, this is what your rate is going to be each year for the next six or seven years, they're assuming that they're going to earn 7.5% return on their investments.
I, I would like to get that confirmed. Not, I mean, I believe you, but I'd like to actually get it from the guy that's going to be developing our values every year to say, yeah, that, if we go with the hardship, that can fluctuate based on the market value at that time.
Year by year.
Year, year by year, yeah, exactly.
You know, the other part of that is, is that, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, when PERS was rolling in dough, they were getting lots of investments until the market took the tumble in '08, was it, or '07? Maybe it was sooner than that.
Starting in '07.
Yeah. They were actually saying to cities, don't pay us. We're going to let you ride. And that's where we got into the problem. And the same thing potentially can happen. We don't control their investments.
Mm-hmm.
We're not on their board. Same reason why we get put into a pool, whether we like it or not, there's, it was almost like redistricting. You got redistrict whether you agreed with it or not. We could be back in that same mode depending upon what the economy does. And it could be no control over what their investments were. You know, the port shut down, there goes a lot of economy type situation and nobody is, nobody's in, responsible for that from the standpoint of what we're doing, but that's where they place their money. And they took a bath and, and that's what's causing the problem right now, is they're trying to recover from that bath that they took.
Well, and it also sounds like at any time, they could just move us into another pool. What's the guarantee that they're not going to do this again in two years and we're going to be now paying $400,000 more just because we got put into a new pool that we have no control or say over?
So Glenn, I've got a question. If I look at this, I've had a rental property and I wanted to either keep the original mortgage or put a five-year arm on it and get a better rate for the five years and pray in five years that this problem goes away and then I could lock it in and pay it off or do whatever. I, I guess the direction that I'm hoping that we'll come to is, I don't believe for the long term, that this unfunded liability is going to exist because I think the market will adjust. That's just my personal view. And if you believe that, just like you had bet on an arm, we would take the path that you pay the least for the next five years if it truly does adjust, as Shelley said. And then we would hope after year four or five, our unfunded liability has shrunk because the market outperformed. Because really, there's two things we're doing here. This is the employer's side of funding the shortfall that isn't made up in the market side of all the investments and the rate of return and stuff that goes. So if they're doing unbelievably good, eventually we'll have to pay unbelievably less. And right now, this is the incremental amounts. So my question is, when you look at those three plans, I, I'm betting on that next four or five years, that in five years, this isn't going to be as bad as it is. How can I minimize the amount we have to pay and not be locked into something past year five or six that we are handcuffed, sort of like what we did for the, the insurance fund where we thought we were signing up for a short-term thing and it ended up being $400,000, $500,000 every year? That's, that's what I get nervous about there. And I think the 30-year schedule that shows each one and then it locks into six years comparison for each, and then the flexibility that's verified at the bottom of each of those options, I think would be very helpful.
Yeah. I, I tend to agree with you. And I definitely would recommend that you check back with the actuary to see what his answer is to that question. But he did tell us today, when we met with him before the budget subcommittee and before the council meeting, he did tell us that once the unfunded liability goes to zero, then the only payment you'll be making from that point on is the normal cost.
Included some information on what would, the two different relief programs, just for informational purposes. So the pool relief program is something that the actuary discussed today, that the chief actuary is taking to the board for consideration next month. And that would potentially provide for $100,000 of relief in year one. And the hardship rate relief is, we had discussed 30-year fixed amortization. And on this slide, I've included some information that would be required if we were to opt for that, that hardship request.
Jason, can you just clarify on the last slide? And if the actuary is taking it to the board next month, that just means that if they approve that, then it's optional for the city to?
It just gives them the authority to then authorize him to provide for relief to the agencies.
It doesn't mandate it.
It doesn't mandate it and we still have the ability to say yea or nay.
So Jason, right now, these two programs today aren't available to us, so the number we're looking at is the 317,000 because these, right now, two options aren't available.
The hardship rate relief is available to us.
Well, we have to apply for, it's available for us to apply for it and we have to get approved. But right now, it's option one, the standard amortization.
Exactly.
Until they tell us that we can do other things.
Exactly.
Okay.
And actually, the, looking at this, again, the standard amortization, that $317,000 number, if we were to, that whole column, you know, beyond 15, 16, so all the amounts, you know, 364,000, the 414, those are estimates. So like we were talking about, the third-year hardship program, how that would go up and down as the actuary resets the liability each year based upon gains and losses, all three columns will be reset. So the standard amortization, the pool relief program and the hardship are all, the only thing guaranteed is the first year, the first year's line, the 15, 16 number, because that's based upon the actuarial valuation that's already taken place. Each subsequent year is there just for an estimate, just to provide for some informational decision-making.
Could you confirm that the second paragraph, second line where it says employer, is that employer or employee?
Employer. So the hardship request and notification, we would have to make available to, to the employees, that the employer is aware, so that the city is aware of a potential reduction in the benefits in the event that the employer terminates the plan without providing for continuation of funding.
Thank you.
So just the, kind of a, another overview of where we expect expenditures to be, 1.24 million. As we discussed, we've already kind of gone through PERS cost at 288,000. At least that's based upon the standard amortization and its net of the savings on the, on the safety side. And that's a non-discretionary cost largely with, but we also have projected a $210,000 increase in insurance costs related to workers' compensation and general liability. That includes $147,000 one-time cost associated with the 2014 annual retrospective adjustment for liability. And we're actually, we've had some positive claim development and we're hopeful that that may be reduced possibly by as, we're hoping at, at a minimum 50,000 and maybe more. We've also included the projected increases in salaries net of PERS savings, that's based upon the MLUs that were approved by council earlier last year. And then there's some costs associated with the police department vacation payouts that we've included in the budget, which is also a one-time cost.
So Jason, before you go off of that, just so the rest of the council knows, within the ad hoc committee, Rich and I are focused on that workers' comp issue, the 210,000. And we've asked for a couple items to be brought back to us. One, we wanted to see the workers' comp cost for the last four or five years so we can get a comparison just to see, because there's a premium cost built in there. Also, we were looking to see when the evaluation, because the workers' comp is done at a job class level and we just wondered when the last time we've done a complete reclassification of the people mapped in. You know, we've done a lot of consolidations, moves, contractors, you know, we want to make sure we're paying the right rates. And so, we'll report back in the future, but that is an area that we're focused on.
Okay. So looking at, on the discretionary side of things, we've included $125,000 of capital replacement charges, which is really based upon the city council's commitment to replenish capital reserves with 35,000 going to the police capital internal service fund, 40,000 to the facilities, streets, parks and the pool fund, and then 50,000 for all state vehicles, but it's also equipment, basically our garage fund. We've also, as Brett mentioned previously, we have 100,000 estimated for the capital cost for the new parking meters, which is a one-time capital cost. And then we've also included the operational expense related to parking meters and budgeted for $40,000 for two part-time parking attendants, which would off, be offset with parking meter revenue.
What is our anticipated break-even point on the meters and the, and the two staff people to work on that? In other words, if we're going to put out 100,000, 140,000 in this, at what point do we start to recover that cost? Is it two years?
We're budgeting 250,000 for parking meter revenue for the year. And so, depending on the way you look at it, if you include the capital cost as part of repayment at some point mid-year during the first year, we would expect it to pay for itself.
I think there's the potential too, that as the, the parking meters, if they get expanded throughout the city, you know, if we have, depends on if we're doing it in, in one phase that encompasses everything that we can envision putting meters in or if we eventually expand that out. If we start it out and then expand it over time, then we would bump up the enforcement. So we would have to, you know, kind of like on the, the plan check and, and building inspection side, as the revenues go up, the expenditures go up. But this is, we've budgeted for two, right now, just two part-time additional parking or police aides that would be able to go out and do the enforcement. And also, from a technical standpoint, the, the technology is pretty exciting out there on the parking meters, that the ability is there to, and I experienced this firsthand, getting a parking ticket over the weekend in another city. But the technology is there for notifying that police aide right away when that two-hour time period expires, so that from a, an enforcement standpoint, that improves the efficiency. But we will bump, we would bump that up as we, you know, as the revenue, as the program increases.
Is there, again, I've talked with the chief about the idea of, both Seal Beach and Cypress have a citizen on patrol thing that do vacation checks, things of that nature. I know that they go around and maybe, I don't know if they chalk the tires or not, but it's the aides that actually issue the tickets. And I, that's because they have to be quasi-sworn or something to that effect or what?
Yeah, they, they, they do have some capacity given to them to, to be able to enforce those violations.
Now, is there any private entity that has that same authority? Are you aware of where that's contracted to the same way?
Not that I'm familiar with.
Okay.
Shelley, one thing I just wanted to pass on to you, when you, so when you take my seat on the ad hoc committee, the discretionary costs, the 125,000, this is the, where all the shenanigans happen. So if you circle that, in the past, whenever we had a budget problem, one of the three levers you pull is you stop funding the internal service funds as Warren and I have done in the past. And it's great, it feels good that year you balance the budget, but with, you know, when we established the, now we're calling it the reserve policy, the policy said, we're not going to do that anymore, we're going to stay true. So I think, you know, even Rich and I just now, we were like, oh, it looks like we can just, there's 125,000. And we reminded ourselves, we really do want to try and stay true to that. The biggest offender has been for the vehicles and, and so, you know, going through, I think that we've done a really good job in the garage area and inventorying all of our assets, you know, the vehicles, seeing how long they'll last. And I know Tony has been really instrumental in that and he's your go-to guy. If, if you start feeling that urge to cut, go talk to Tony, take a tour. I'm just giving you, I mean, as a start point, because this, this is where it happens right here. And, you know, we've done a lot of stuff in this area and we're really trying to stay convicted to it, but we'll, we'll see where we end up.
Yeah, it is, it's another area, just to highlight that, it's another area that in the future, if there are surpluses that are more than anticipated in any one fiscal year, the council, in terms of a policy decision, can determine, let's, let's take that surplus and put it into these different pots of money. So if it's, if it's PERS reserve, if it's, if it's a workers' comp reserve, the reserves that we've established, the council as a, as a body can determine to put the money into those pockets. But the internal service funds are, are three that will. But the internal service funds are, are three that will, you know, need to continue to be replenished.
Non-touchable.
Non-touchable, but also they need to continue to be replenished and maybe more.
And are the mechanisms, because I like that word, put into place now that it's a percentage of something, so it's an automatic, so it is truly non-discretionary, it's just a percentage that's been set by policy?
Yeah, we tried to take the subjective fights out of it, and like what Tony did in the garage fund, he actually developed a method of how long does a car last, so as a policy.
Okay.
And that way, he's just implementing the policy, he's not trying to pick something over the other.
But the garage fund is one that will, you know, it's 50,000 now, based on the policy developed in the last fiscal year, and over time, that will need to be added to as we go forward.
As cars get older and...
Yeah, it's about a million dollars short right now, actually.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But it also, you know, the garage fund does have, and Tony had put that together, working with, with Glenn and Stephen, the garage fund not only now has the vehicles in it, it has park equipment, and it's a fully loaded schedule.
Okay.
So it's about, I think it was about 1.2 million dollars identified in terms of all needs that we need in the future with, with limited funding there. So we're, now, this is a good sign, we're beginning, based on the policy, to put money back into that, and we'll begin, we'll continue to do that over time.
So this fund is anything with a motor? Is that safe, simple to say?
Yeah.
It goes vroom, vroom, it's in the fund?
Yeah, worth over five grand, I think it is, yeah.
Okay.
That's a good way of putting it, you had to update the policy to say that.
Are there smart cars designed for police use?
They go vroom, vroom.
Yeah.
So lastly, on discretionary costs, we've also included the expenses associated with the second police captain position. And as discussed earlier, it is a fully burdened cost, it's salaries, benefits, equipment, vehicle charges, and, and so that's been incorporated into the budget.
All right. I'm done with the fight.
In terms of what we're recommending, we're recommending that a portion of the 13, 14 surplus be set aside into unassigned fund balance to possibly be used in future years. And we're also requesting that the capital component, if we're not able to finance it, that it be paid for from, for reserve, from reserves. So the potential budget gap is 390,000, but actually, we have a list of budget closure measures which would actually reduce that and eliminate that budget gap, would actually provide for a budget surplus of 21,000. As I mentioned, part of that is the 100,000 paying from, for the capital component of the parking meters, paying for that from reserves. We're also requesting that at least one-half of the increase in the PERS contributions be paid for from unassigned fund balance reserves. And that estimated increase, based upon that standard amortization, is 288,000, so one-half would be 144,000. We've also have not included a, an estimated salary savings vacancy factor, and we know that traditionally, there are vacancies that occur each year, and with the expected retirements in police, we know that there will be some savings associated with that, and we think 100,000 budget savings vacancy factor would be, would be appropriate. And as I mentioned previously, there, we're hoping, because we've had some positive claim development on the liability side, that the retrospective adjustment may be reduced. I've included a 50,000 placeholder here. I think we're, I'm hoping that that's a, actually a, a minimum, we're hoping that the savings will actually be larger based upon the development. But we're working with CalGPAI on determining what the actual cost savings will be, and we'll bring that back to you when we have more information. And then lastly, we've included the recommendation to prepay PERS in next year, which would provide for 17,000 of savings. And so as I mentioned, those, these different items add up to 411,000, and that would close the budget gap, which is currently 390,000.
So, so if you look at this from the ad hoc committee's perspective, we really struggled with this. You notice on the first two, they end with, you pay for it at a reserves. And, you know, our, our guiding principle, you know, 2005, '06, you know, we had 8 million dollars, and fairly quickly, we spent that down to 4 million in reserves, chunking it at 400,000 to 600,000 a year. Here's a 390,000 problem, it's starting to feel like a little deja vu. But how we kind of were able to get past that, is the first part of this, the capital component for the purchase of parking meters seemed like an investment to generate revenue. The 144, half of the 288, we need to think about that one. I mean, we're, we're supportive of what's being recommended here, but this really is us not being able to pay our bills and really using savings for the next 30 years, considering where we're at, because this is an ongoing problem, and we haven't fixed it yet. And you, you know, if they were going to take all 288, and we set just half of it and split the cost and hope that we'll make it up in the general fund operating, I don't see the fix. I don't know, maybe Rich does so far, but this is the, this part bothers me the most of everything that we're doing right now, but I, I don't see any other way out of it in the short term.
Well, I agree, I think short-term fix, this is about the only option we have, keeping in mind that we're looking for long-term fixes such as increasing revenue somehow, you know, retail sales and the whole thing. So it's like, this is, yeah, this is short-term, this isn't something we're committing to for 30 years, is, you know, taking half the liability and applying reserves to it. So I'm okay with it short-term, absolutely.
I feel like we're a little early in the game to be looking to take from reserves. I mean, we, we owe it to have a more thorough discussion of what else is possible, because this is too easy. I mean, unassigned fund balance reserves sounds a lot nicer than just taking it out of the checking account, but it really is the same thing. And that's, you know, when costs go up...
We balanced the budget last year.
We balanced last year.
By taking reserve money?
I don't think so.
We didn't?
No.
Okay.
Troy would not have kept his vice chairmanship of the ad hoc committee.
Yeah, I would have been kicked off by Rich if that happened, but, yeah.
Anything else, Jason?
So just, real quickly, I have listed the budget calendar with the dates and times, just as a reminder. So let us know if there's any conflicts with your schedule.
Those are all Mondays.
Yeah, and a lot of them. Yeah, thank God we went to one meeting a month.
Yeah. And then lastly, just the recommendations. So as we, recommendation number two, you know, 15, 16, we're, we're really not looking for an actual action item. I mean, we're, we're looking for feedback, and we've received your feedback, and so we'll continue to work on, on the budget and fine-tune it. And as we bring it back through the budget workshop process, and we'll continue to fine-tune the budget and provide you with additional updates, and we'll let you know what the potential impact will be, if, if any, in terms of needing to use reserves. But recommendation number one has to do with partly, first, receiving and filing the mid-year report, and then for 14, 15, and then also approving the budget amendments back to fiscal year 14, 15, as discussed in the staff report.
That motion should come from the budget committee. We're going to make the guys put out on the limb on this entire package.
I'll make the motion that, for staff recommendation on line of number one, and really, the approve the budget amendment was the 15 grand in total, correct? The 10 and 5?
And then the revenue side as well, 191,000.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Come on, Dean, come with us.
I did.
Okay.
And on item two, if you want to provide any direction at this time, or as I think we're hearing, we just go through the budget process.
Our direction right now is don't do it.
Yeah. That's fine, we'll go forward with the process.
Thank you. Jason, let us say excellent job, thank you very much, very impressive.
Thank you.
He's still smiling.
Okay. We will move on to item 10B. Staff report, please, Brett.
Oh, yes, Mayor and City Council, this item is, has been brought forward by Mayor Murphy for consideration of televising our cable television broadcast of the planning commission meetings. We have provided in the staff report and a fiscal impact based on the cost provided by Doug Woods. I've checked with Mr. Wood, and he is available to do this broadcasting if the council wants to approve this item moving forward. In terms of, one area where this could help us with is in the, the minutes that have been prepared and have been, as we're moving forward with the city council minutes, we have a format that the city clerk is working on developing, and she's been meeting with all the different department secretaries that have the responsibility for preparing minutes within each commission. And we're trying to standardize those minutes and put them in a format that's somewhat more condensed. So I think we're, you know, we're making that progress with the city council minutes, and this would be one step toward making that progress with the planning commission minutes, and then eventually adopt a model for all the other commissions as well. So we will take any questions, comments?
All right, you want to start with me? I'm good. I'm in support of this conceptually. I had a couple questions that I had asked previously of, you know, why, why start with the planning commission first, what prompted that? The, the general plan part of that function is over, from what I understand, now that it's been brought for councils, so their meetings, as all of the commission meetings are real important, starting this as a test case, doesn't it make more sense to look at maybe traffic commission? They've got some studies coming up and the results of that. You know, I, going to a lot of the commission meetings in the past, and then also now seeing how the minutes reflect that, you miss a lot, and it's no fault of anybody typing out the minutes, but you miss the personalities, you miss the tone, you miss the eye rolling, those don't make it in the minutes, and then there's something about watching that. So, you know, I'm in support of that, but I also don't want to be the resident spender tonight at the meeting and approve, just let's spend more money and you guys figure it out. So I'm supportive of it as the idea, but I'll defer to my colleagues on how to make this happen.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So I'm, I'm supportive of this as well, but I guess want to just kind of, I'm not sure if it's the same question that Councilmember Housemember could ask, but the planning commission is a different entity than the other commissions. Would that be a fair characterization?
Yes, and that's a fair characterization.
Because they do have the power of making resolutions and passing them, which is unlike the other commissions. So I, I think it's important of the, of the commissions, this would be the one, I think, would be the, the test case. So that's, that's where I would support it because of the separate nature of what they do and the business they carry out on behalf of the city.
I think it's a logical starting point.
Yeah, and, and I think, yeah, again, the, the work they do, not that it's any more important than the other commissions, but it is that, that public record aspect of it that, that if something doesn't go the way that the applicant may like, then it gets appealed to us, and I think having that record is really a, would be very beneficial. That, thank you, Mayor, back to you.
You're welcome. Just want to clarify, you know, I just, I picked the planning commission pretty much for the reasons Warren said, but, you know, it is, it is a pilot program. Really, I could live with any of them. And, and the only reason I didn't ask for all of them is to work the bugs out for a month or two. Somebody, I've been lobbied by two other chairman, why not their commission right away? As Shelley mentioned, the traffic commission feels they're on the verge of a lot of important stuff. So if the council wants to look at the bigger picture of all the councils, you know, I'm hoping to get there anyway. I was the one who inserted and to use a pilot program to record other commissions. So whatever the will of the council is, you know, if they want to look at more than one, I mean, I think the whole thing's 400 bucks a month.
Per commission?
The 400 total. Yeah, it's 100 dollars a commission, or 100 and a quarter.
100 and a quarter.
Depending on the length of the meeting.
Per commission.
So I'm probably going to be the unpopular guy. I honestly, Rich, for your first executive order coming out of the chute, I, I, you know, we had a lot of problems with LATV, and we got a lot of passion, and we're really starting to try to rebuild that and get this going in the right direction. You know, I, I agree with Shelley, the planning commission has come to its end. I mean, the three years that it took to get the general plan done was really critical, and it's, you know, and I probably would have been supportive of that at that point, but I, I honestly don't know why we want to throw more fuel. I mean, as a council trying to provide guidance to LATV just in general, to add one more thing to them of broadcasting something, and Brett, I'll be honest, I don't buy the, the meeting minutes than the, the path to, you know, having, you know, we're going to get that thing squared away. I, good, I hope that works, I don't equate it to being able to televise it for the planning commission. And I, I mean, just tonight, at the public comments, we had the cable commission, who I don't think was the chair, but one of the members saying, hey, I think I need, you know, we need to be on. And, you know, I, I, I think that what has worked on the commissions as the outsider looking in, I read all the meeting minutes, I say that every time, maybe it doesn't characterize it exactly, but at least she had kind of an idea of what's going on. But, you know, those, those groups are put together to prepare policy and to help do the groundwork for us. The finished product, when it comes here, is the byproduct that we're supposed to be presenting to the public. There's not a significant amount of attendance in those meetings, so it's not like we're giving an opportunity to look into something that is a, you know, is a blockbuster thing that everybody in the community wants to see what's going on. And I don't know, so I, I just don't, I'm not sure at this point why we would, you know, we've, we've got a lot of opportunities to take elective decisions. This is an area, we're already having problems, we already, we don't even know budget, we don't even know how we're running the TV station. I know Doug can do anything, but I, I just, I think, you know, pretty soon, I mean, just let's go four moves into this chess game, we're going to be public, doing all three commissions or four now, you know, because you can't stop at one, and at the end, we really increase the public benefit. We definitely made a job now for LATV and made it more valuable, but some of us are sitting back on the contemplation side, saying, what is the future of LATV? What are we doing? Are we, I mean, we're even looking at RFQs right now to evaluate who's running LATV, and, you know, how does that get paid for? And so I, it just seems like we aren't sending a consistent message, you know, to the commission. The commission's told us point-blank, you guys really need to provide more guidance, and the thing that we think that we're going to do is have them start getting, you know, a make-work jobs Caltrans program to get, you know, all the commissions televised. I'm, I am not supportive of this at this moment, and I, I can't see the public benefit. And so with that, I'll leave it at that.
My turn?
Sure.
I don't think this is a job for LATV, it's the, the one individual that broadcasts these meetings. I think it's worthy of a start. I don't, I don't know so much that the, all of the work on the general plan has been done, and so therefore, they don't have anything to do. They have lots that they do, and I think it's probably one of the commissions that is the most confusing to the general public, because I don't think they really understand what they do, and, and in our case, the amount of time that, that they put in in the process of what's doing. I would be in favor of it if we put a, a time limit on it, if it's going to be a pilot, let's do six months, whatever is, is agreeable, and evaluate it at the end of that. I agree that, you know, where the funding for this stuff is coming from is yet to be determined, because it's, apparently, it's not part of whatever PEG money is, is coming There's differences of opinion up here, I'm sure, relative to the cable, the cable commission and its value. And I think if we got off on that discussion, we're going to have a longer discussion, especially with the public, because I think more of the public sees the value of the different programs that LATV can do as a, as a public access type thing. So on, on that basis, I think we start with planning, I think it's the one, the right one to start with. And I would like to see us do it for a, a period of six months, and then evaluate it maybe at month five, to see what kind of feedback we're getting. maybe at month five to see what kind of feedback we're getting. You know, maybe the public could have a better understanding of what exactly is involved for that group. I'm not sure that, that traffic would be necessarily the next one involved. Parks and Recreation has a similar thing. I think we have to evaluate as we start moving down which ones we do and which ones we don't do because some of them don't last that long. But I would be in favor of trying this for a six-month period and see where we go.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I don't, try to understand your comment on LATV. What I'm envisioning is like a one-camera school board meeting, you know, not moving around, just one fixed camera, recording the sound in the group and then being aired, not live, being aired, you know, within the course of the over, several times over the course of a couple of weeks. And also, you know, put on a website or YouTube where we can access it so we can go look at, you know, what was the discussion, that type of thing. That's what I see the value in. I just think we, we have an easy resource and I feel like we're 20 years behind the time that, you know, you really, you rely on those minutes when we, you know, we're really not supposed to even go to the meetings. You know, there's times I'd like to go to the planning commission and sit through it and get the flavor. And this is a way for us to be able to look at that and the rest of the community on their own time. I mean, a lot of people don't want to come even to a planning commission or a traffic commission meeting. First of all, traffic commission, they're the only one out there, so it's a weird feeling anyway, but, you know, to sit there for two hours in a planning commission for the little item you're interested in, just let somebody go, you know, go to that item and look at it. That's, that's really what I'm proposing, not, not anything with LATV. And I mean, I agree with Dean, LATV is going to be a much longer discussion, I think in March, right Brett? You know, that, that's, so that, that's my thought, is to get one up, see if it works. You know, maybe we decide that, you know, it really was a stupid idea.
But how do you determine that? I mean, there's no Nielsen ratings for LATV.
Right.
So we just, it feels like it was working? I mean, I...
I think we'll get feedback from people, you know, who will see it. But I've gotten mostly very positive feedback on the idea for the people who do pay attention in the city that, hey, it's a chance for me. You know, we will have people who go look at all the commission meetings if we, if we're willing to put them up there. And I've spoken to some commissioners, I don't think it's going to change the flavor of the meeting. And I really think you forget about the camera about your second or third meeting and, you know, you go home and watch yourself once and then it's about, you know, then you're reliving the meeting and like, this is as much fun as I thought. But I just think for the ability to have that information out there for all the people, that's really what we're, what, what I propose this for.
But you're saying that in the context of, what I'm listening to is it would be great to have really then all commissions eventually videotaped so you can watch it. So, and, you know, it started here as Dean's like, oh, I don't know about traffic commission. And then, you know, when we're trying to get people to volunteer and apply for these positions, you know, just is one commission more important than the other? Are we sending a message to the community as, you know, yeah, you really want to be on commission that, you know, planning, if you don't know anything, oh, they're televised, that must mean it's more important.
Yeah.
Where a lot of time, I mean, we're just, I don't know, I, I, I guess I'm just trying to think through, I think eventually you end up, you're going to televise all because you're going to get pressure from each chair of the commissions.
Well, it might be my goal anyway.
Yeah, and I think that is your goal. And then at that point, we've created an institution of the next tier of government to go through a little bit of the pre-policy making before it hits us, which is fine about transparency, but I, this, I mean, I think we would all agree, this is an elective move, it's not required, it's something we're deciding, hey, that maybe this would be a good idea. And we would also agree that we really don't even know how we're going to run LATV in the future and eventually this amasses to an effort that has to be maintained. And like I said, I'll, you know, I'll step out of the way and I appreciate having the opportunity of weighing in on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just a quick clarification, because, and I agree with the pilot, I like that just to get the bugs out, but it's going to go over our budget process. So do we, because I love throwing, find more money for this at the ad hoc committee, do we just assume that it's going to be an annual expense of $6,000 a year? Because by the time this pilot, we're assuming it's going to be successful, otherwise we wouldn't even be doing it. So, and I agree, it's got to be none or all of the commissions because you don't want to place higher value on one or the other, they're all important, which is why we have them. So do we just assume that there's going to be an annual expense of $6,000? It can be tiered back if it doesn't work or if we're not doing all the commissions, but that's, that's the ultimate goal.
Basically, yes. Six thousand, there could be a small savings because traffic doesn't usually last as long.
Right, but the assumption is, as far as when you guys are figuring out all the money, it's $6,000. Okay.
Would you guys define a criteria of success for the six-month? I mean, what, it seems so subjective. How would we define, you know, the couple, the commissioners came up and said they liked it, people in the community, I mean, how do we, how do we determine success? Maybe we don't care, honestly. I mean, you could sit back and say, hey, look, it's, it's in the name of transparency, it's a strategy move, so let's just do it.
Yeah, I guess if it's, I mean, if, if that's, if the goal is transparency and having an archived record, I mean, having an archived record is a benefit, to be able to, another set of minutes or another way to access the meetings, that's, that's, that's a benefit. It, I don't know how the council would want to measure.
Well, let me ask you, today, our commission meetings publish meeting minutes. Those meeting minutes, I believe, are published on our website, right? We don't, we don't do that?
No.
Yeah, so we don't even...
But the planning is, right? Planning commission does, but the other commissions do not unless I, I haven't checked in a while, but traffic and...
To my knowledge, the only thing that's listed is the agenda, it's for all commissions.
Yeah, and I guess my point is, you know, if, if we really...
Or part of the agenda, yeah.
Wanted to pilot, I mean, we, we put the information up there for the public to evaluate and then we see, you can tell on a website how many people actually hit and go and look and, and that would be real data, but I don't know, just it, it seems like even the basics, like online, we don't capture the meeting minutes and publish that. I mean, if we're fully transparent, why, why aren't we doing that?
I'm sure.
Yeah. And, you know, but let's, we're going to go all in on, on the TV component, but, yeah. Anyway.
I think you're going to get the feedback. You've got staff that attends and can see if there's a different way the commission is operating because there is a camera running. You're going to get feedback from the commission, you know, whether attendance has increased or decreased because of it. I don't think that would have a factor with planning. I think the people that have topics that are generic to what's going on are the ones that come. And I don't think they get watchers that just come on a regular basis. Having been on traffic, as a couple of us have been up here, I don't think you get that many people either. I, I think the idea of spreading it is, is worthy of consideration, but I think we start with one spot and let's just see how that works. If it, if it turns out that it really hasn't provided the, the value to the staff, if it hasn't provided the value to the citizens, then we're into it for six months and we go from there, so.
I remember, Dean, you had the idea of Granicus for the meeting minutes.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, it's a way to put all these online and have this really cool connection and it was really neat. But in the end, people, you know, it really depends, do people go up and actually pull these down? You know, you can provide the best public service, the best transparency that's never used. And, yeah, I mean, there's no way to measure it and I, I realize the votes are here to move forward with it, just, I guess I'm just asking if there was any way of more specific criteria in six months. I'm sure I'll have the same comments then, but I won't have anything to justify whether it was successful or not, so.
I think on the Granicus thing, that was one of the deals we talked about that would help. I thought it provided more than apparently what it did or the module that we needed to actually transcribe minutes. The, the part of that that I like, because La Palma happens to be one city that uses a similar program, they don't televise, but they do put the audio out, is that you can actually go to the agenda and click on the item on the agenda and it takes you right to that spot topic-wise. And you don't have to, to listen to the whole meeting, you can hear just the topic that you're looking at. I know Councilmember Hasselbrink has talked about the idea of streaming and giving the ability for people that don't have cable to hear and listen to what's going on. I think this is just another step perhaps in that direction. I really think we need to be determining whether that's beneficial. We've had problems with minutes from several of the commissions where they, they backed up and they've had to bring in outside staff to get caught up in the process, so, you know, if this, if this proves to be beneficial, then maybe we look at the next step of that in terms of the idea of streaming. There is a one-time expense to do that and then a maintenance-type fee. That might be the, that might be the right way to go.
City Attorney, can I ask you, is it inappropriate for the way this agenda item's written to address the meeting minutes thing in the motion? I'm trying to find a way that I would attach myself so it can go 5-0, but can the meeting minutes get addressed where we don't post those today to the website?
Meeting minutes are not covered by this item.
Okay.
This has to do with broadcasting.
Because the city manager was talking about this in the context of meeting minutes and justification of that, so I thought that maybe we could bolt that in as, to do the recommendation on a pilot program and, and also put the meeting minutes to see how that works too.
Yeah, it is mentioned in the...
It is in the report.
Yeah, I mean, I would, just trying to find a way to jump on, if we can do maybe that too, I would, I would support that.
Well, it's, it's included in the discussion part, both on page one and page two of the report, so.
Background on the discussion.
So what would your motion be?
Well, hopefully someone else will make a bit, I'll support it, would be to, to support, you know, Mayor Murphy's executive order on the cable commission. Yeah, I, I think he's saying actually on all of them, all commissions, but to, and to bolt in the, you know, do the, publish the meeting minutes by the city clerk on the, on the commissions, just like we do on the city council.
So let me, let me, if I may, trial, take a, take a stab at a motion. So I will make a motion that on a test trial basis for the planning commission only, that we do a, a basic record for rebroadcast later. The period of performance though, that I would suggest on this one, it's just coincided with the fiscal year, so four months, that will end at the end of June and if it really works, we can appropriate monies and budget accordingly. And then to also have a budget ceiling of no more than $200 per meeting to cover that. So that'll be my motion. And then, oh, the part about the, the capturing in, kind of consists, well, on a trial basis, the capturing of the video recording and audio in conjunction with the meeting minutes as part of the permanent record and published on the website. The pub, the meeting minutes documented on the website. That's my question.
Okay. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Thank you for jumping on. Okay. We will go to mayor and council-initiated business. Who would like to go first?
I can... I'll be happy to go. So, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, I did attend the Orange County Fire Authority's Best and Bravest Award Ceremony and that's where they, we recognize the firefighter of the year and all those that contribute, even the office, the non, sworn non-safety staff. And it's a, this is my second year of doing, of attending it on behalf of the city. I paid my own way, but I do want to thank the city for buying an ad in the book. We are the, one of few cities to do that and I believe it just offsets the cost of printing the book. They do have sponsorships, but our city was well represented there and I want to just bring that up. The other thing that, well, I think that's it, I'll just back to you there.
Thank you. Shelley?
Sure. Last month was very busy. As far as the boards that I represent, met with the Orange County Library Advisory Board. They are having a literacy orange event on April 11th and it's, it's almost like a book festival where they're going to have keynote speakers and pretty well-known authors. It's a full day, it's $60, it includes lunch and all the speakers and I've got, I can give our city clerk just a little information that we had here on that. And also this coming Saturday for the libraries, our own Los Alamos Rossmore Library is having the front porch dedication. That's at 1:00, so I would invite everybody to be there. Going to this board kind of reenlightened exactly what the library does. It's pretty fabulous stuff, they've kept up with some pretty good technology. You can download eBooks and save some money on Amazon and all that, so I would just invite everybody to support our library, just as our resource. The OCTA I-405 Working Group, that process is just still going through. As a whole, the six-quarter city's still oppose the toll lanes. Mayor Murphy and I met with our new supervisor, Michelle Steele, who serves on the Orange County Transportation Authority Board now, and her position is definitely against toll lanes. That was nice to have her verbalize that post-election, so that was good. Went to a couple of the ECCOC receptions and dinners just to make new contacts and meet all kinds of people, all kinds of community events, the Cypress State of the City, our own Los Alamos State of the City. Mayor Murphy, very well done, glad it was you up there and not me. We attended the, the youth center sponsored At Night Among the Stars a couple of weeks ago. It was honoring 16 youth volunteers throughout the community, that all the nonprofits participated and nominated their volunteers. I was astonished at some of these things these kids have done, ranging from a five-year-old that was raising money to buy toys for Afghan kids, to an 18-year-old that started basically a movement along a poor bus line, giving care packages, and he started with $20. And it's, it's morphed into this unbelievable service. So that was terrific. And then I attended the Change of Responsibility for the 79th Sustainment Support Command. That was great, they're, they're very, very appreciative and grateful about our constant support of the base. They've made that very well-known, they vocalized it on many different levels, which was nice to hear. And then we also attended the OCTA, the West Connector Project, which was the dedication of the four to five years of construction of the 605, 405, 22 connector project. Number of cities were there and well-represented and it was a nice ceremony. And then just today, the Casa Youth Shelter, we did the flag dedication ceremony with a Girl Scout troop. It was their goal to stand a flagpole and, and have an official flag-raising ceremony and they just did a tremendous job and it gave some, some nice attention to Casa Youth Shelter and everything that they do there. So in with that.
Thank you. Dean?
Most of the events, and I've attended a lot of the same ones that Shelley did, are included on our, are on my website, losal.net. I'd encourage you to go there to verify that. I would like to offer congratulations to Mayor Murphy on the state of the city, his speech, whoever does his speech writing, and I'm not suggesting he didn't have an input in it, but...
Brett deserves the credit.
Did an excellent job and made the city look good and I appreciate that very much. In reporting out on a couple of other things that we'll ultimately get up on the website, I did attend the meeting for Westcom yesterday, that's the one group that I'm assigned to, and I was selected as chairman for this coming year and John Pete from Cypress was selected as vice chair. I interviewed today for the California Joint Powers Insurance Association for their executive committee. They're considering seven people for a term that will be open because the gentleman that occupies it now has decided not to run for reelection. I do appreciate the mayor and fellow councilmembers who sent letters of support. I'll know in the future whether or not I get that. I was also nominated thanks to Mayor Murphy at one of the city appointment committees, I guess. I was nominated to a position on the California Coastal Commission. I received today a multi-page application that will then go to the Senate, the State Senate Rules Committee for selection, so I don't know how many holes are there and I know that a lot of that has to do with politics and I'm not sure that I have much of a chance on that, but kind of exciting to at least try. I would like to close the meeting tonight in honor... I would like to close the meeting tonight in honor of Dave Taylor. He is a, or was a, local businessman and engineer who, along with his brother, located their business in Los Alamos back in 1979. They produced parts for NASA. Were involved with the Apollo mission in preparing materials for NASA. They also did work on the B-2 bomber. He passed on January the 21st as a result of a heart attack, and so I'd like to close the meeting tonight in his honor. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Protemp.
Yeah, just a couple items. Again, I wanted to thank Councilmember Hasselbrink and Mayor Murphy for attending the Casa Flagpole Ceremony. Made that very special. I mean, there are a lot of exciting things going on there at Casa, and so thank you for taking time. St. Isidore, we had the Monte Carlo night, also had the opportunity to do some, they called it celebrity card dealing, but it was still fun, and it was a great, great event to continue to raise money to pay off the loan to the Orange County Diocese for St. Isidore. The Youth Center, Shelley, you were the, you're the president of the Youth Center Board, and that was a great event. They moved it this year to Seal Beach, and I don't think I'd ever been at that building where the event was down there. It was a great event, and, you know, all the nonprofits, including the Casa Youth Center or Youth Shelter, we had two people recognized, and it was just really, really well-done this year, so I definitely pass that on to the board. Yeah, Rich and I did a bunch of budget ad hoc. I wanted to remind everybody of the Americana Awards in two weeks, not this Saturday, but the next Saturday. You know, we nominated and he was selected, Tom Barclay, who was general manager of Genal Lumber. If you guys haven't gotten tickets for the Americana Awards, I would encourage you to do that. You can contact the city to find out more information about that. But it's a very nice evening at the Disneyland Hotel, and basically, he is our citizen of the year.
That'll be right after you run the first triathlon that morning.
Yeah, I'll have a couple leg cramps. The, yeah, I'm planning on attending the front porch library thing. You know, it's funny, Shelley writes a passage, is that we've all been on the library board, so you're on now when they have technology. I was on when people weren't going to libraries anymore and they weren't sure if there was still a need for them. So, but it's exciting to see, and I really enjoyed it, too. An update from Rivers and Mountains Conservancy, two or three big things going on. You know, Brett and staff and Stephen and Dave Hunt have been really active in trying to get the asphalt bike path done that goes commensurate with the new park over there at Coyote Creek. You know, the funding's there. Can I just ask you, Brett, just a real quick, high-level update? Because the biggest challenge has been, we got the money, our budget, we underran our budget for the project, and they said, hey, look, you know, they have an opportunity, the bike path's totally, has been redone up to Seal Beach to the 405 freeway to the beach, and this section has been neglected for 30 years. The good news was, you know, that we had the money. The bad news is when we started to do it, we realized if we lead that as an agency, then we own it from here on out. The Orange County Flood Control and the US Army Corps of Engineers gets involved, so there's been a lot of coordination required, and it's probably going to come back to the council, so I'm kind of lobbying you now, that when, you know, we're going to have to decide, as a, probably as a, as a board or a council, do we want that long-term liability? And I would say in 30 years, it'll have to be redone, and definitely somebody will have to take it on. It'll be about 300,000 or 400,000. Where are we at right now is the high-level construction timeline.
I don't have that timeline right in front of me. Dave Hunt has been working with Stephen to develop the timeline for both the completion of the Coyote Creek and being able to eventually sign off on that. We're not yet ready to sign off on the future maintenance of that. And then associated with Coyote Creek is the bike path and bike trail, and so Dave and Stephen are working with Rivers and Mountains Conservancy and staff to develop a timeline and a plan for that using funding from the original grant. So the funding from the grant will cover that bike path. At least, we will likely take over then the maintenance of that in the future. Timeline, I don't have it right here in front of me.
Well, I don't either, but the one of the, one of the major hurdles is the changes of the agreement. Kerry's looked at the agreement that they have asked us to consider to maintain. We've sent it back to LA County Department of Public Works, and now public, they have to either say yes to our changes or no to our changes. We're waiting for that. That's been about a two-week process thus far, giving them a little more time. So we're moving on all ends.
Right. Yeah, and we turned over a rock there. Just so you know, this isn't a Los Alamos-specific thing. All of the projects that get funded through Rivers and Mountains Conservancy, from Mount Baldi all the way to the ocean through, you know, the Coyote Creek is just a part of the San Gabriel River. So all of these that we do projects, whether it's the Emerald Denclis up by Whittier, et cetera, whenever we kind of come across this, this is stuff that really is like new territory. So you fix something and beautify it, then you own it. And the issue right now, just to kind of give you an idea, hopefully, you know, well, like I said, if we run into glitches, what I asked Brett to do is, let's not fight it out completely legally. If we have a problem, then it's a policy issue, bring it back here. As Orange County, or LA County Flood Control has thousands of miles of flood control area, and they got a very small budget for not only just bike trails, but any sort of road maintenance, construction, asphalt for right-ofways and all that. So they really, they're good with a dirt path, and this is asphalt, and there's a lot of bike path, and so everybody is competing, and unfortunately mainly LA County cities. So by us taking this on, two things. One, if we say we're never going to embrace this as a city and take it on, it will never get redone because it's the lowest priority of the flood control that, you know, this isn't even on the horizon of their budget. And, you know, so for the, probably the likelihood of Orange County and for definitely Los Alamos, I think that this is the only time it's going to get done in the next 30 years, and I just hope that we'll do everything we can. The second project I wanted to talk about for Rivers and Mountains Conservancy is one that we started last year, and I call it the Purple Pipe from Long Beach, and it's the reclaimed water that comes from the LA County Sanitation District, very similar to Orange County Sand when we were there. You know, we do, you know, 200 million gallons a day, we put it in the ground, and we also have potable water, but there's no piping system across Orange County to put that water in Purple Pipe and basically recycle that water and use it for lower-grade activity. Long Beach does, and they basically water Eldorado Park very affordably. So what we've been trying to do is to craft a project with the city, which was an idea that Dean and I think Warren had early on, was to bring the water over the San Gabriel River into our Coyote Creek Park as a minimum stop point, Oak Field right there, and start what could become the header of distribution for Purple Pipe water that's really affordable for the longer term. That is a project that affects the riverbed. That's a project that is in the scope of the San Gabriel Rivers and Mountains Conservancy. And then we passed Proposition 1 for the bond, that was the water bond, for $7 billion. And in that, there's a $50 million component that we got for Rivers and Mountains Conservancy for water recycling. So what I've asked staff to do, and believe me, guys, if it got too big, I would bring it back to the council so that we're not doing stuff unauthorized, that you guys didn't authorize, but to help support me, we are filling out an application to put together a project that would potentially fund the staff to go do a further project, work in the politics of the Purple Pipe issue, and then get it funded. And then I put Brett in touch with Jim Herbert at Orange County Sand, folks at Golden State Water, and we're trying, because you've got to get everybody's approval to move water across county boundaries. And through that, then get the engineering and design part funded as part of the ground as a start point. That whole project is going. I guess, Brett, we submitted the application.
Yeah, well, at least there, Rivers and Mountains Conservancy hired a consultant to go out and do kind of the pre-call to projects and build a list of projects, and had apparently been working with LA County cities that are already involved, LA County agencies that are involved with Rivers and Mountains Conservancy. We kind of got in on the tail end in terms of the notification of the application for the call to projects. So they gave that to us. I put Cory in charge of the developing the initial application, and in a time crunch of about, you know, less than a day, we had. He put it together. He worked with Stephen, he worked with Dave Hunt. They did a really good job of at least providing a solid project description and very rough estimated cost to get us in the hopper hopefully for the call to projects. And then, you know, you're going to continue on your efforts with RMC and
Yes.
And word out.
So the challenge on this board is, I'm sitting back, I'm the only Orange County rep, and if you guys remember, I'm appointed to that board through your support in the city selection process, but I'm actually, as the member of OCOG, or Orange County Association of Government, so my responsibility is really supposed to be representing all of Orange County, and there's another role that used to be the guy down in Seal Beach that was on this. So that's an open seat, it's a governor appointment, and I don't think any Republicans are going to get appointed. We put two or three up, and none of them have been accepted. But what I noticed is once Prop 1 passed and they were starting to form the money process or the call for projects, I asked the question in the board meeting, when do you guys give us the opportunity to go back to our stakeholder group? Like, I need to go back to OCOG and talk about, all across at least nine cities in Orange County have the opportunity to be a part of this. The LA County cities already had all their projects lined up, everything was going, they've got it here. So I got Mark Stanley in touch with Brett, and I'm like, look, I need a presentation to go brief OCOG. We need to get everybody on board. So we got ready for that OCOG meeting this month, and they didn't have a quorum at OCOG, so now it's on March. But again, I think what I'm trying to do is, I don't want to be the guy like in SCAG, what we talked about last meeting, is, you know, is not telling everybody in Orange County, look, there's money to be had in this bond. Some people, I know Dean and I have kind of crossed swords on whether this was a good thing, but it is about recycling, too, not just about moving water, and there's a tremendous opportunity for us for a project. And it wasn't by design, I wasn't being selfish for just Los Alamos, I mean, but this was the only one I can get in before the door closes, because LA County is probably going to absorb most of the opportunity. To give you an idea, the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy has adjudicated about $110 million worth of bond money of Prop 84, and I think mainly Prop 84, earlier bond money about 10, 12 years ago. So 50 million is almost half of what they've had over the last 10 years, so it's a big deal. And so I just wanted to keep everybody up to speed on that. Mayor Murphy did, I didn't get to see the final part of his State of the City, but I was there for most of it, but it seemed like a really well-attended event, and I just wanted to put in a plug for Casa U Shelter. Next month, Kenny Brandyberry starts his pizza Monday at Valentino's Pizza, where every Monday, and I know, Warren, you've always been super supportive, and other council members, but please go down. He raises about $10,000 a year for the Casa U Shelter, and the deal is every Monday, you know, they basically have, I think it's $10,000, and 100% of proceeds go to Casa U Shelter. And the hospital usually ends up ordering 200 pizzas a week through that process, which is very helpful. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
That's it?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay. You know, I want to start by thanking my colleagues. After the ACCOC discussion of getting more involved, I've seen most of us almost every event, so I think we're making a good showing. I was able to attend the Youth Center Awards, which were really uplifting. The tremendous group of people. As all of you know, I love it when a small group or one person makes a big difference, and there's some like 10-year-olds making differences in the lives of Afghani kids. It's just, it's phenomenal. I was able to go to the St. Isidore's Casino Night, and I was able to attend the Casa Girl Scout Flagpole today. You know, those three charities, just do anything we could for them. Wanted to congratulate Dean on becoming the chairman down at WestCom. I'm sure you'll do a good job. And, you know, wanted to thank the staff for the state of the city, and it was a lot of work, a lot of fun, but you guys did a great job. Shelley and I were also able to attend Supervisor Michelle Steele's office and talk about the 405 on a very small group, and I think we can get, you know, she's on board with us, so I think that's important. It feels almost like the corridor cities are one group, and everybody else is like, that's your problem. Would invite everybody to the Saturday library opening, and as Troy mentioned, the Americana Awards. What he failed to mention is probably your only chance in your life to see me in a tux if you want to attend. The, let's see, oh, a couple things I'd like to still look into, Brett. First of all, there's a big move in Long Beach to make Long Beach an international airport, which will really increase the noise, and some of those planes do drift over our way. And I'd just like to know if there's a way that we can monitor them? Is there any type of partnership board, any oversight committee that we could be part of to protect our airspace?
I can look into that. I used to, we used to live right under
Yes.
Flight path in Long Beach.
Well, a friend of mine at Los Altos is, you know, fights the airport tooth and nail for everything, and they are in the process. It's got delayed at the city council, the last meeting, because they want to look at a few more things, but they do want to bring in international flights, which are, according to my friend, much louder.
As I said, they had a limitation on the number of flights every day, like 43 or something.
Yeah.
But that, if international would take the lid off of
Yeah, international changes the rules, and it also changes, international isn't as time-restricted, probably because of the distance they're flying, but they're given a lot more leeway. The planes could be landing at a much, you know, much later hour. You know, I guess that's it for us. Over to you, Brett.
Just thank Mayor Murphy for a great state of the city. Echo the comments by the council, and thank Stephen and Cory and Chelsea for their hard work and help put it all together. It was a really nice event, and it's all about Los Alamos.
Yeah, I had that song on my head for about three days.
Me, too. And the race on the base is next Saturday, starting at 7, first race, 7, no?
6 something.
6:55. Mayor's going to be up on the engine, starting the very first race, and then I think there's several that are, I'm going to walk in it. I think that there's others that are running in it, and there's a lot of participation throughout. Shelley's walking, Richard's walking.
I'm walking.
Warren.
Kerry's running.
Who's running?
Kerry's running.
Kerry's running. Stephen's running.
Not very fast.
Running. A lot of participation throughout, so it's an exciting event next Saturday, and it's still happening, and we're moving forward with it. And then the police appreciation lunch is on March 11th, coming up.
Okay, we're going to go to closed session, but before we do, we are going to adjourn tonight in the memory of three people, and I'd like to read them while we're still have an audience. The three people are David Taylor, as Dean mentioned, is a longtime business member in the community, opened Superior Engineering in 1979 after moving from the city of Stanton. His engineering firm was pivotal in the NASA Apollo missions and making parts for the B-2 and other aircraft. Shirley Bailey, resident Rossmore, passed away at her home January 25th after a long battle with cancer. Sherry married Jim Bailey in 1972, and they quickly became active in the community, working on many projects, including the creation of both Rossmore Park and Rush Park, working as a docent at the Los Alamos Museum, and becoming an active member of the Habitat for Humanity. And we lost our former police chief, Robert Cabo, passed away January 28th following many years of service in Garden Grove. Chief Cabo joined Los Alamos around 1970 as assistant chief, was promoted to chief in 1974, and served until his retirement in 1979. Chief had been living in the Palm Springs area. Okay, we'll go to closed session and report out. Kerry?
The purpose of the closed session, there are three items of anticipated litigation. Two of them are pursuant to subdivision D-4 of governing code section 54956.9, and the third one is on pending litigation pursuant to subdivision D-1 of that section. One case, Wagner versus City of Los Alamos.